To Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, good evening. As the hour is 6:40, I will call the Exeter Select Board meeting to order. Our first order of business this evening is we have an interview for a committee. We had two interviews on our agenda. One has asked to postpone, so we will move outside of the Novak to conduct the interview, and we will return at 7 o'clock for regular business. Thank you.
For this week's report. Landfill solar array construction is underway. Economic Development Director hosts housing tour. Public Works implements intersection improvements on Railroad Ave. Parks and Rec hosts their annual senior barbecue. And the Select Board discusses a Gaza ceasefire resolution and the Pickpocket Dam. For Exeter TV, I'm Gabe, and this is the Exeter Biweekly Report. Let's get started. Installation of the largest municipal solar array in the state is underway at the Town Transfer Station. We met up with Town Planner Dave Sharples to learn more about the project.
Approved both of the 2021 and 2024 town meetings, the landfill solar array project has finally broken ground. Crews have been working since mid-May to bring baskets full of rocks as a top layer of the array, allowing them to rack all of the steel frames on top of the rocks, giving a place to safely lay the solar panels without ever digging directly into the ground. Once completed, the array will produce 1.77 megawatts of energy, making it the largest municipal-owned and operated solar array in the state of New Hampshire. The capacity is estimated to offset 92% of the town's current electricity use for municipal buildings, converting this brownfield site from a liability to an asset. We spoke to Town Planner Dave Sharples about how this project is going so far and what the timeline is moving forward.
Prior to COVID, we voted it in for $3.6 million for the solar array. But then COVID hit, and everyone knows inflation, cost of steel, supply chain issues raised the price of pretty much everything across the board. And in about a 30% increase. So a $3.6 million solar array was now $5.2 million. So we kind of sat on it for a little bit, and then the Investment Reduction Act came into place and took that and provided a 30% credit on the total. So that brought the 30% increase of the inflation up from 3.6 to up to 5.2, and then brought it back down. So with that Inflation Reduction Act Investment Tax Credit, or ITC, the project numbers looked good again, and we were able to move forward. To the best of my knowledge, this is the largest municipally-owned and operated solar array in New Hampshire. In Exeter, we actually have, we're going to own the system, we own the panels, and we own the electricity and the renewable energy credits, or RECs, that are produced, and we can sell those on the open market. So much different situation than what most municipalities do, and can't thank the voters of Exeter enough that overwhelmingly supported this project. Oh, absolutely, I'm excited for it. It's very rewarding because I see it as we took a liability, a landfill that costs the town money every year to maintain and monitor, and we've put an asset on it that is going to generate electricity for the town and generate funding for the town. So I see it as a win-win.
On June 6, the first solar panels had finally been installed, marking the first of many to be added to this long overdue process. Exeter, being the new leader in municipal-owned solar energy, will send a message to places far and wide about how we can do our part to make energy more efficient, as well as set an example for taking liabilities and turning them into net positives, such as the landfill. For more information about the solar array and the steps Exeter is taking to become more sustainable, you can visit our website at www.exeternh.gov/planning-sustainability.
Hi, I'm Gabe Perez from the future, and this is editing Bob Glouacki, also from the future, Friday, one hour before the report comes out, and we realize that we forgot to include a specific intro. So without further ado, I'd like to go ahead and read you that intro. Exeter's Economic Development Director, Darren Winham, hosted community housing leaders from across the state earlier this week to showcase Exeter's unique approach to addressing housing needs. We attend the event to learn more.
Exeter hosted housing planners from across the state on Wednesday, the 5th, for Planning NHUNH Cooperative Extensions Housing Academy. The event started off at the site of the Gateway to Exeter project in Epping Road. When finished, it will have 224 units, split between two buildings ranging over a 50,000 square foot total on 17 acres of land. Of those 224 units, a portion of them will be workforce housing that will have rents not exceeding 80% of the area median income, AMI for short, for at least the first 30 years of the project.
Obviously, it has to be municipal infrastructure. So what we did was, you probably know there's a light down here, Continental, where Continental Drive is. So we wanted to put water and sewer, town water and sewer, and gas from there all the way up to the highway, which is what we did do, and we made a penetration of a private road into a parcel that's on the other side that opened it up for development over there.
We talked with Tom Monahan, the developer behind the project, and asked him how the Gateway to Exeter project got underway.
We asked the zoning board through Doug Eastman, the zoning administrator, for a variance for a mixed use, allowing us to put residential in a commercial zone. And they were very favorable to the idea with respect to the location and the fact that we have utilities to the site, water and sewer. It just creates a lot of economic opportunity. Generally, every step of the way, I needed the town's assistance, and they came right to the fore. As we've gone along, it's been a good, wonderful working relationship.
The group met again in the Exeter Town Hall to discuss with each other how they take care of their individual business, such as accessory dwelling units, zoning, and legislation. Following the group meeting, Darren Winham guided attendees on a walking tour through the downtown, highlighting the variety of housing stock Exeter has to offer.
I think it was 13 of them. These are all homes, but this is one parcel, and these are all condos. So we thought this is a pretty unique way to see this site developed in a way that showed density, and you can see they're beautiful. They're a lot closer than other homes, and it's a condo property.
We caught up with Winham after the event to learn more about the housing initiatives and how they connect to economic development.
A lot of times, we don't get a chance to see each other in one location, so they do these housing academies here and there, and Exeter was chosen to be the host this time. So regarding Exeter's housing situation, it is dire, just like every other community in the seacoast. It's very expensive, there's very few, very little stock for sale and for rental, and it needs to be addressed, not just at the municipal level, it's got to be addressed at the statewide level and frankly, at the federal level. It's a problem that's not going to go away, it's probably the number one economic development issue, and it probably will be for the next two decades. So there's a lot of very smart people that are trying to address it, and the hope is that we can start getting on top of it. So like Dover, Exeter is looking at very interesting ways to try to solve the crisis. So the mixed-use neighborhood development zone, which was passed a few years ago and then expanded to C2 this year, we're seeing some results for that and with that. So Exeter is leading the way, as one of the communities that are leading the way along with Dover.
To learn more, visit www.exeternh.gov/ed, or you can watch full coverage of our stuff on YouTube at Exeter TV, Facebook, Instagram, or on Comcast Channels 8 and 6.
Construction has been underway at the intersection of Winter Street, Columbus Ave, and Railroad Ave. We spoke with Public Works Director Steve Cronin about the project.
The intersection of Winter Street, Columbus Ave, and Railroad Ave is one of multiple intersections selected for improvements through Article 5 of the 2023 Town Warrant. We spoke to Public Works Director Stephen Cronin about the work being done.
So the town maintains a list of high-priority intersections that are typically based on safety concerns or congestion. The Winter Street-Columbus-Railroad Ave intersection in particular, there are some safety concerns there regarding site distances and turning movements. In the short term, we've decided to make some minor modifications to the intersection geometry, the implementation of curb bumpouts and relocation of stop signs and stop bars to allow motorists to see better in both directions to be able to navigate the intersection better.
The other intersection improvement is a roundabout on Front Street at the intersection of Linden and Pine Street. The project is still in the design and planning phase.
There are a number of other intersection improvement projects that are currently in design, including a potential roundabout on Front Street. We're currently looking at multiple alternatives right now and working with abutting property owners to address some of the concerns and parking in that area. So more to come on that project over the next few months.
To stay up to date on these construction projects, follow Public Works on Facebook, subscribe to their email newsletter, or visit the town website.
Exeter Parks and Recreation held their annual senior summer kickoff barbecue in the Exeter Town Hall last Friday. Bob Glouacki stopped by the event to learn more about how Parks and Rec is providing programming for all.
Town staff manned the food line as seniors came together to enjoy good food, music, and conversation at the 2024 Senior Summer Kickoff Barbecue.
It's great to see you all, enjoy the food, let us know your feedback too, and we hope to see you soon at a future program or event. We have our brochures and resource guides up at the front toe. Thank you.
Select Board Member Nancy Belanger volunteered to help out at the event.
I just wanted to thank Parks and Rec and all the sponsors and all the volunteers and all the people that signed up to come out for the senior barbecue. It's a wonderful thing to see community action in progress, and specifically, I want to thank Parks and Rec for all the work they're doing to include seniors in our programming.
Assistant Parks and Rec Director turned reporter David Tovey interviewed two attendees about the event and senior programming.
I'm here with two lovely ladies at Exeter Town Hall for our senior barbecue today. Is this your first barbecue?
Yes, my first barbecue, yes.
Oh, well, I've been to a couple of them, and the Valentine's Dance and stuff, they're so much fun.
Awesome, and what do you enjoy about them?
Oh, just meeting different people from town. Food's always good, the desserts are great.
Love to hear that. How about any other programs or trips? Have you ever joined us for the Parks and Rec Department on those?
I've not done trips, but I got involved with the walking programs. And now there is indoor walking and outdoor walking, thanks to David. There's indoor walking at the Phillips Exeter Academy track on Tuesday mornings and outdoor walking on Thursday mornings, and a good group of friends that have built up over the time, it's been going on for years.
Just love meeting the people and taking advantage of the nice things the town offers and that type of thing, and meeting you guys.
Exactly.
So it's been a win-win all the way.
Yeah, and there's so many things offered specifically for senior citizens. That's what I think is wonderful. Parks and Rec has a lot to do with the youth, and you know, I appreciate that so much attention is given us to the oldsters. It's good.
Well, we appreciate your time today, and I look forward to seeing you both at walking and future luncheons, and hopefully some trips too.
Yes, for sure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
To stay up to date with all things Parks and Rec, be sure to sign up to their email newsletter, follow them on social media, and check out their website, exeternh.gov/recreation.
And finally, Will Tapley has a recap of the Select Board's discussion on the Gaza Resolution and the Pickpocket Dam from our Meeting Minute series.
Welcome to your Meeting Minute for the Exeter Select Board's May 28 meeting. The Board returned to the discussion from the last meeting about the conflict in Gaza. Dr. Krishma Manzur spoke on behalf of the many concerned citizens who were present.
We did submit a resolution last, two weeks ago, and it was, "Thank you very much for taking the time to consider it." We have now revised it as a proclamation. Hopefully, that will answer some of the questions that two of the board members had. The Select Board of Exeter recognizes that all human life is precious, and all people have a right to live with dignity, feel safe, and be respected, regardless of nationality, race, or religion. There is no justification for stopping food and water to Gaza, no justification to starving 2 million people.
After a very thorough conversation amongst board members, I think all of whom agreed not only with what was submitted before us, but certainly the testimony that we heard from everybody that came up was incredibly moving. I think the conversation towards the end of the deliberation was whether or not this is a Select Board, whether this is within the purview of the Select Board, because typically, because Selectman Shartran astutely commented that typically this is done in a citizen's petition that goes on the warrant for voters to take up.
When it comes to mentions of how money is spent and how it's taxed, and I really feel that is the voters' purview, and I don't think the Board can make comments on that. And then I did revise the "now, therefore, we" to bring it back just to the Board and not to involve any other public servants. I felt very strongly that we're speaking for ourselves and urging the world and not particular individuals.
I don't remember us doing something for other wars that have escalated that we all feel very strongly about, or at least I know I do. I just struggle with this. It's not that I disagree with this, it's personally, as a Select Board member, is where I struggle.
It is our jobs as human beings to stand together and speak up. We are coming to you, our representatives of the town of Exeter, asking you to help our voices be heard, to stand on the side of humanity. Throughout history, it is the silence of leaders that has made violent acts possible, and it is the silence that allows them to continue.
You know, we are all responsible for our own traumas and our own beliefs and to take care of those. However, I don't think this is a decision for you to make, I just don't think it's yours.
We might say, "Oh, this doesn't affect us, this isn't an American issue, this isn't a town issue." But it sets a precedent if we say, "No, we were complicit, we allowed our money to be spent on weapons that hurt people, we allowed our government to be complicit in a genocide."
The Board decided to table the decision to their next meeting to allow Selectwoman Molly Cowan to be able to participate in the vote and discussion. Jake San Antonio from engineering firm VHB presented the feasibility study data on Pickpocket Dam. All possibilities for addressing the dam's letter of deficiency were presented to the Board. The public was invited to speak on the topic.
I spent a lot of time on the river as a young child, and as an adult, I used the river, I've used it for decades. My children have also used it, so I know how beautiful it is, and I also know what a valuable asset that is.
How long will it take for the sediment to sort of settle and either wash downstream? I don't know what I'm talking about. I'm hoping you're understanding what I'm saying. How long does it take to flush the thing out, is what I'm trying to... What would you guess?
Five to 10 years to reach a new equilibrium.
Okay, and how would, within the first five years, how would it affect life in the river with that sediment suddenly starting to come down? I know you're going to remove some if you take the dam out, but how does it affect the life in the river?
It's actually healthy for the river. Sediment-starved rivers are not as healthy, and it's part of the reasons why that lower reaches are impaired. I mean, I think the Great Dam is a great example, right? That was removed in 2016, so it's been eight years since that's been removed. You know, the wetlands upstream, the river has recovered. You know, those wetland areas did take a few years of transition, but you know, they're more diverse and lush than they were prior to the dam being removed.
I'm here today to lend a voice to those who cannot be here, 257 people to be exact as of this morning. I have a petition on change.org to save the dam. People who signed it are supporting keeping the dam where it is. My opinion is 257 people who sign this petition should be considered.
The Board tabled their decision to a later meeting. To watch the full meeting, visit our Exeter TV YouTube page. The next Select Board meeting is slated for June 10th. See you there.
That does it for this week's report. Be sure to like, share, and subscribe to help us spread the word, and head over to the town website and subscribe to the town's email newsletter to get this show and other town news sent straight to your inbox. We'll be back on June 21st for the next edition of the show. For Exeter TV, I'm Gabe Perez, and this has been the Exeter Biweekly Report. Have a good weekend, Exeter.
Okay, as the hour is 7:00 PM, I will call the regular business meeting of the Exeter Select Board to order. We initially called the meeting to order at 6:40 PM, at which time we went for a board interview, and now we're ready to assume our regular business meeting at 7:00 PM. Good evening, Exeter, good evening to my colleagues on the Board, respective town staff, certainly those in attendance here, out there, and I believe downstairs. Good evening to those watching at home. I'd like to start by introducing the Board to my right, Selectman Dan Shartran, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, and good evening to all you folks here in the room. Thank you for being here.
Our Vice Chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan, good evening.
Hi, everyone.
Our Clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Selectwoman Nancy Belanger, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
And we have our Assistant Town Manager Melissa Roy here, who will be interim Town Manager while Rustine is out on leave. And we also have our Recording Secretary Joanna Bartel, good evening. And my name is Nico Papakos-Desen. Again, good evening to all of you. First order of business is public comment. This is an opportunity for folks to give comment to the Board. We do ask, though, that if your public comment is relative to an agenda item, that you wait until that agenda comes up. I will pause for just a moment to see if there's any public comment. And look online. Okay, seeing none, then I will move on. Next order of business is to approve our regular meeting minutes from May 28, 2024. Selectwoman Belanger, I believe you have a few revisions?
I do. Under three board interviews, A, Molly Ruffner was on the list but wasn't interviewed, so I think we should remove that.
Okay.
And then, let's see, on page 3, paragraph, well, that's hard, we need paragraph numbers on this, so 1, 2, 4, maybe 5, it says David Kovar of 38 Cross should be rode.
Okay.
And, just bear with me, page 5, 1, 2, 3, 4, about the fifth paragraph, it starts with Bob Collier of Conne Road, and Conne Road is misspelt, it's C-O-N-N-I-E, and I found that one more time on the last paragraph on page 7. And that's it.
Thank you. Joanna, did you get those? Terrific. Any other amendments or revisions to the minutes? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Exeter Select Board regular meeting minutes of May 28, 2024.
As amended, so moved. Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
All abstain.
Four and one abstention, motion passes, thank you. This evening, we interviewed Fran Hall, who is looking to volunteer in the Budget Recommendations Committee. Fran previously served for about six or seven years on the BRC, and I know was Vice Chair for at least one year. We're excited to have her back and thank her for volunteering. I would entertain a motion to appoint Fran Hall to the Budget Recommendations Committee for 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion?
Welcome back.
Welcome back, seeing none.
Fran?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We're going to jump into our discussion items, first of which is an update on the Squamscot River siphons. We have our Public Works Director Steve Cronin on Zoom. Mr. Cronin, good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chair. At your last meeting, we provided a plan for the latest directional drill attempt for the project. That drill attempt was successful, and this past Friday, the new 12-inch siphon pipe was installed. That pipe passed a pressure test this morning, and with that, I'm happy to report that the contractor has now completed the river crossing. The drilling subcontractor will now demobilize from the site, and crews will move on to the next phase of the work, where they will install the inlet and outlet structures for the new siphon and connect it to the existing sewer system, decommission the existing siphons, and restore the site to its prior condition. Weather permitting, we anticipate substantial completion of the project around mid-August, with minor punchless items being... with minor punchless items being completed shortly thereafter.
Thank you very much. That's fantastic news.
Absolutely.
Any questions from the board?
No, just it's good to have good news.
I have a request.
Please.
Would you give Mr. Velasic our thanks?
Absolutely, I will.
And, Mr. Cronin, we would like to thank you and Mr. Velasic and Ms. Roy for keeping the abutters up to date on everything that they've had to deal with, and certainly we thank the abutters for their patience in this very important project that will continue to provide sewer for 40% of our population. So such an important process.
Sorry, Mr. J, are we going to have one more, at least another update for the abutters, for the mill folk and?
I'm sure that's in the works, Mr. Cronin.
Yes, we will. Yeah, we're working to coordinate that. We have, we're waiting on some minor details on the schedule, but once we have that, we'll coordinate that meeting.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it. Okay, the next item on our agenda this evening is an update on the Rug property. I know there's a lot of people here that are interested in this update. How we're going to provide this this evening, I'm going to make a quick statement, then I'm going to invite the town planner to come up to the podium to offer a more thorough timeline as to how this process has gone through the last couple of years. After the town planner has given his timeline, it would be an opportunity for the board to either ask questions or make comments. And then we'll open it up to the public, starting, of course, with the citizens of Exeter first, one at a time. If you could come up to the podium, when we call for public comments, state your name and address for the record. We do anticipate that a lot of you have comments, so we would ask that you keep your comments to within two to three minutes, if possible. So with that, I've written out a statement that I'd like to read before we invite Mr. Sharples up. Regarding the potential acquisition of land from the Rug family, the select board had been kept updated and conducted discussions with town staff as well as legal counsel in non-public meetings. Pursuant to RSA 91A:3, only the following matters shall be considered or acted upon in non-public session. RSA 91A 32D reads, quote, "Consideration of the acquisition, sale, or lease of real or personal property, which if discussed in public would likely benefit a party or parties whose interests are adverse to those of the general community," end quote. The Town of Exeter remains in favor of the proposed project, as it would secure this land for the public benefit. Unfortunately, the Rug family officially notified the Town of Exeter on Friday, June 7, 2024, that they are not moving ahead with this project. This was a meeting that I asked for with the Rug family, with their council, with our council and the town planner. This was my first opportunity to meet the Rug family and discuss this face-to-face. Prior to that, we had also offered mediation. The Town of Exeter had no role in this decision to not move forward ahead with the project. The Rug family asserts ownership of a portion of several parcels north of and including parcel 19-16 to the town boundary with the Town of Newfields. Importantly, this assertion is not only as to ownership interest, but also as to configuration of the parcels of land in this area. The Town of Exeter has deeds from various sources to most of this area. Consequently, to resolve any title issues, the Town of Exeter or the Rug family would have to forego their respective rights to any of the parcels in question. The Rug family's position is that the Town of Exeter should relinquish all its claims. By doing so, the project as conceived would then necessitate the town purchasing land it already has deeds to from the Rug family. As the select board are the stewards of town property and taxpayer dollars and must marshal these assets responsibly, it would be irresponsible to forego any rights it may have without some compensation, especially when thereafter it is contemplated that the Town of Exeter will pay tax dollars for the same land. The Rug family have done their own title work and presented this information to the Town of Exeter supporting their claim. However, the Town of Exeter has no authority to determine respective ownership rights of parties to land. This is only something that the Superior Court can decide. The Town of Exeter was hopeful to avoid such a protracted court action and instead made an offer whereby the Town of Exeter would relinquish various claims to parcels in exchange for the contested portion of lot 19-16. The required statutory process regarding land would have to be followed, but this was a framework that, from the town's standpoint, could lead to an expeditious resolution. The town extended this proposal in January 2024, two months before the election. Until Friday, June 7, 2024, the Town of Exeter had not received a formal acceptance or rejection of this offer. Unfortunately, it appears that this project will not advance at this time. However, should this change, the Town of Exeter will certainly resume their discussions. And with that, I'd like to call our town planner, Dave Sharples, up to give a timeline, which begins, I believe, in 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you think maps would be helpful? I do have a couple up here that I could put up on the screen. I'll do that. But then I got three. I don't know who would.
If you give me the clicker, I won't mind clicking for you. Actually, you should be able to.
Can I sit here? Grab a seat.
There you are.
Welcome to the floor. Yeah, right. It's kind of scary. You're tied.
Don't they be able to bring your chair out and spin?
Sure.
If the two of you under the screen want to bring your chair up and turn it around while the presentation's going on, and then just go back to it, so you're not craning your necks.
I'm blocking someone.
And they all know they can see this downstairs and hear it. Yeah.
Just going to remind them.
Dave, can you just? Okay, never mind. Yeah, thank you.
What? We all said?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to take this opportunity to go over the history of this issue, at least since I have been involved. I'm doing this so the public is aware of what has transpired over the last several years. And first, I'd like to clarify something, as this issue has been framed, at least by some, as a boundary dispute. And however, it is a bit more complicated than that. While there are boundary questions, there are also ownership questions and a host of legal questions. So it's not just a boundary issue. It's more than that. But back in 2016, I started here, and sometime about a year later, the natural resource planner at the time contacted me about this issue. And at that time, the Rugs had verbally claimed ownership of five parcels, and the town files showed that all of these parcels were owned by the Town of Exeter, and we had deeds to all of them. Four of them were acquired by owner unknown, and one was purchased at auction. So just going to show this on the map. Those are all map and lot numbers in bold. There's 1111, 101, 102, 103, 104, 105, and 1916 are all in bold. So there's seven parcels involved there. We have deeds, and according to our records, the town owns all that. Because I heard like 6.8 acres, you know, it's about 37 acres, I believe, not all the blue, but what's being things. So that was, and initially, and the next one forward. The next, yeah, initial claim. So when the Rugs came to us in 2017, that was the initial claim. The blue was still town-deeded. They weren't making any claims to 105, 1916, or 1111. They were claiming 101, the ones in the green, 101, 102, 103, 104, and 106. So I met with the Rugs several times. I explained to them that I was willing to work with them and find a resolution. I explained that I would need something substantive to bring forward to the select board, such as title and survey work, because according to our records, these parcels were owned by the Town of Exeter. They did agree and hired folks to complete title research and conduct survey work. Things quieted down for a while, as the work, I think, took about five years to complete. During that time, we gathered information on the five parcels ourselves. We asked legal counsel for their opinions, and that was provided. And then we received the report from the Rugs in July of 2023, about 10, 11 months ago. And staff members, including at least me and the Conservation and Sustainability Planner, and I'm sure the town manager, read the report, and we all had several questions. But instead of going back to the Rugs and having them expend additional funds, we reached out to our legal counsel to review the report and see if the conclusions in the report were valid. The answers from our legal counsel, although protected by attorney-client privilege, was similar to staff's, in that the report was not conclusive and several questions still existed. And moreover, the report now claimed, can you do the next one? So see, that was their initial claim, and then the report we got 10, 11 months ago added that. And you'll see, it's not only 101, 102, 103, 104, the five original parcels in the initial claim, it was part of 1111, all of 105, which we acquired via tax auction. We, the heirs of Paul Estate, it went to auction, and the town bought it back in like 40s. So that 105 was being claimed, and also that lower portion, that strip that's on 1916, the yellow, that's kind of the 6.8 acres that's gotten a lot of attention. But there's kind of a lot more than just that. So as I said, the report now claimed a portion of seven parcels instead of the initial five parcels, and their boundaries no longer follow our tax maps. They come short, those boundaries didn't follow our tax maps. One of those additional parcels, 1916, which we had talked about, was acquired by the town through an open space subdivision and was given a warranty deed for the parcel. A warranty deed essentially warranties the land against third-party claims, and we have a third-party claim. We brought this matter to the attention of the select board. We held several non-public sessions to discuss how we move forward. As stewards of taxpayer dollars, and since the town believed it had legitimate claims to property, it could not simply give up its claims. Instead, in January, as the chair mentioned, we made the Rugs what we believed was a fair offer to solve this dispute expeditiously in light of the upcoming vote on the March 2024 warrant. After a successful vote in Newfields for funding and Exeter for the concept of conservation, we awaited the response from the Rugs. By this time, the Rugs retained legal counsel, so their attorney was dealing with our attorney to work towards a solution, but those efforts have so far been unsuccessful. We met with the Rugs this past Friday in hopes of having a discussion and possibly come to a resolution, and what we learned at that meeting was that the offer to place the entirety of the property into conservation is no longer possible. And the Rugs rejected our proposed resolution to the ownership dispute. Now that we have that information, we will continue to work on this matter in hopes of a resolution to clear the title. Finally, I wanted to point out that I have heard terms like lack of transparency, extortion, sabotage being thrown around regarding this project. I believe the town has been upfront, as it could be, given our legal advice and the legal situation we're in, and provided updates during select board public meetings. The most recent one, on April 29, 2024, where I came to the board and gave an update on the status and where we are, and I did it before that, I think in the fall previously and so forth. So I think we've done our part. And I can assure the public that I did not witness or take part in any sabotage, extortion, or any motive except performing our due diligence on behalf of the town. I am unaware of anyone in the town that didn't support this land being placed in conservation, and it is very unfortunate that the deal has been removed from the table.
Thank you, Mr. Sharples. Before you leave, any questions of our town planner from the board, or any comments?
I have one question.
Please.
And I guess this is to both you, Mr. Chair, and you, Dave. Is there a path forward for the select board and the Town of Exeter to work with the Rugs? I mean, is that, because I think I hear from, you know, I hear from a lot of constituents, and I think that preserving this land is really important. Is there a way to do that?
We asked that question on Friday when we met with them, and we didn't really get a direct answer, other than this proposal, they said, was off the table. However, I think we made it clear between Mr. Sharples and I that the Town of Exeter was willing to listen, and we were willing to do whatever it takes to work forward in the future. However, they felt fit. So we've made it clear to the family that we're always willing to listen, we're willing to sit at the table, and we're willing to work forward to try to make this work.
Okay.
Mr. Shartrun?
I just want to make one thing clear. Selectwoman Cowan said that she's in favor of putting this property in conservation. I want everyone to understand that there is no one on this board that has expressed anything but support for this project. We were working primarily in non-public because there were the title issues, but every meeting, there was nothing but support from the select board for this project. We were all excited about it. We all knew that the town was very excited about it, and we agree with your sign. We want to save the Fort Rock Trails, and we've done nothing but tried to work towards that end. Thank you for holding that up.
I have a question. What's the financial implications of?
We'll let you come by as soon as we're done.
I thought you were asking questions.
Nope.
Of the board.
Oh, sorry.
You'll have an opportunity to.
Okay, sorry.
I just want to make it clear, though, that this board worked diligently in non-public session to allow this to happen.
Any other questions, Mr. Sharples?
I have none at this time. I would like to wait until after everyone has.
You're sticking around, Dave, right?
I'll be right here.
Thank you.
I know. There's plenty of questions, I'm sure.
So it actually would be a good idea if you stay at the table, in case there's a question asked. And we would now open it up to public comment, again, starting with residents of Exeter. And if you would, we would invite you up to the podium, and if you just state your name and your address for the record.
I'm Janet Stevens. I live at 19 Colonial Way in Exeter. Just have that question about what are the financial implications for the Town of Exeter if we were to work with the Rugs on what they are proposing? Like, how much money is this going to cost the town to?
I'm not sure how I can answer that question, because the Rug family has made it clear to the Town of Exeter as of June 7 that the deal is off the table.
So we didn't really know what the deal was?
No, we did know at the time of the last presentation, I believe, if all of the grants that were going to be applied for had been achieved, we were looking at approximately $1 million of taxpayer dollars.
And does that get changed because of this dispute?
There would be nothing to put on the warrant.
Okay.
So.
If I'm understanding correctly.
You're talking about a dispute, but as of last Friday, the owners of the property said they're no longer interested in working with the towns of Exeter and Newfields. So I don't know where we go from there. We remain interested, but that's what they said.
Thank you.
Good evening. Vanessa Lazar, Woodbridge Lane. I understand you've addressed some of the questions, but this is a group effort, and I represent our volunteer group, so I will read our prepared comments. Dear Mr. Papakosinides and the Exeter Select Board and Mr. Dave Sharples, we are here tonight because over the last, past 18 months, Trust for Public Land, SALT, which is Southeast Land Trust, and a vibrant network of volunteers in Newfields and Exeter worked tirelessly to conserve 148 acres of beloved forest, wetlands, and 12 miles of the Fort Rock Trail system. This land is a gathering spot for our community, a driver of the town's recreational economy, and a place for our children to play, have adventures, and connect with nature instead of screens. I know you all agree. These efforts were rewarded on March 12, 2024, when Exeter overwhelmingly signaled its support for conservation by passing the Article 24 advisory measure with 88% of the vote. Newfields went even further, voting to fund the conservation initiative with 67% of the vote, despite the fact that none of their select board members supported us. From the public's perspective, the hard work was done. Due to the position of the Newfield Select Board, passing the funding measure felt like climbing Mount Everest. In contrast, given the Exeter Select Board's support and overwhelming results at the polls, it seemed like a layup to resolve the dispute over 6.8 acres of land. This is all we knew, was 6.8 acres, because we did not know all of this. The 6.8 acres in dispute represents a mere 4.7% of the total 148 we sought to conserve, and only 250,000 approximate value of the $5.5 million appraisal for the land, a value that pales in comparison to the dollar value of the time and energy volunteered by residents in support of the conservation effort. Instead of a layup, we stand here as a community completely devastated by what appears to be the loss of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to conserve this land. be the loss of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to conserve this land forever, despite already having secured $3.4 million in funding. And just last week, we learned the project ranked number one in the country, and it's a record competitive year, for a $600,000 community forest and open space acquisition for Newfields. Given the magnitude of the volunteered time and energy, the overwhelming support from the polls, and the significance of the funds secured to date, it feels impossible to us that Exeter was not able to resolve a 6.8 acre blip of an issue on behalf of its residents. We stand here today and demand accountability. We ask the Select Board to specifically address each of these following questions before adjourning. Our first question is about effort. I know you just gave us a brief overview, but we understand the position of the Town of Exeter is that there is no known dispute over the 6.8 acres because Exeter made a formal offer to the rug family in January that asked them to surrender their claim to 6.8 acres of land and never received a formal response. However, Exeter knew that the rug family had shared its due diligence to support their position already on the 6.8 acres, so the community, it feels like the Town of Exeter is hiding behind an irrelevant procedural detail, especially given the overwhelming show of support at the polls. Can town officials explain what steps they took? I believe, Mr. Sharpples, you already just did. If any, to resolve this issue between March 12 and May 28, the grant application deadline? And why Exeter's inability to resolve this issue was not made public prior to the eve of said deadline, so that there was no opportunity for us to help resolve the problems? Our second question is about evidence, because the rug family has shared extensive title research and stamped survey work to support their position of ownership. Can Exeter share what documentation or diligence supports its position? It doesn't sound like there's already, there is no public record of Exeter's assessment of the rugs' extensive title work and survey, or of Exeter's own title work or survey work. Has this been completed? And if so, why hasn't it been made public? In the absence of any such work, Exeter's position of sitting back and waiting for the rug family to disprove in court a warranty deed Exeter received for the land from a developer seems egregious, given the public mandate at the polls to try and proactively move forward with the conservation. And our final question is next steps. Given the resounding will of the voters, is there any immediate action town officials can take to try and resolve the boundary dispute in a way that might allow TPL, Trust for Public Land, and SALT, Southeast Land Trust, and all the passionate supporters here tonight, an opportunity to conserve the land? I mean, they're, perhaps they'll change their mind. Who will be responsible for these initiatives and who will be responsible for overseeing that work and when will that be completed? Thank you for your time and consideration. Respectfully, Vanessa Lazar.
Thank you.
I'm Helen Kruba, and I live at 27 Captain's Way in Exeter. I'm speaking for the Captain's Meadow Homeowners Association, a collective of 60 homes that stands united in supporting the town's endeavor to acquire the rug property. The community's resounding support was evident on March 6, as you know. Article 24 passed with overwhelming support for securing this conservation land. This is a testament to our shared commitment preserving this natural habitat. This land is a destination spot for many on the seacoast in New England and is sought after for its unique, well-maintained trail system. While this is vital gathering space for our community, it also serves as a sanctuary for seacoast wildlife. It has many ponds and trees that would adversely be affected if not conserved. It is a crucial natural preserve, providing a refuge for diverse species and contributing to the region's ecological balance. Its loss would harm the local wildlife population, disrupting their natural habitats and potentially leading to the decline of certain species, something the seacoast cannot afford to lose. Given the overwhelming support from the community, we respectfully urge the Select Board to recognize the urgency of this situation and take immediate action. As tax-paying members of this community, we must protect and preserve the rug property for the benefit of current and future generations. We would appreciate it if you could listen to your constituents and act in accordance with overwhelming support for purchasing this land. We acknowledge that you have been trying to resolve this dispute for quite a long time, and we appreciate your work. The boundary dispute, or whatever land dispute, while significant, should not overshadow the broader goal of preserving this invaluable natural resource. It would be extremely unfortunate to lose this property over the dispute of the land. The time to act is now, before irreversible damage is done.
Thank you.
Let me put it back on the screen where people, you can see people.
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Folks can step up if there are any other public comment.
Good evening, everybody. David Reyes, 11 Ash Street in Exeter. I had written myself some messy notes and then forgot my glasses, so I can't even read them. But that's all right, because I think Dave Sharpples and others, thanks, Dan, I think pretty much covered what I thought to be the outstanding questions, and he's basically responded to a lot of them. It strikes me that this could easily become, you know, the Select Board says X, the rug family says Y, the two don't match up, and the public is left not really knowing who's right and who's wrong. But at the end of the day, the question basically is, is it possible for the Town of Exeter and the Town of Newfields to wind up owning this land? There may be a dispute over 6.8 acres, it might be more than that, we don't really know. Dave says yes, that's true, there is more. I guess in my mind, it's still hard to, to get my head around why we can't, for a certain amount of money, just wind up owning all the land and set aside the question about who owned what to begin with. Does that make sense? So it seems like we're getting stuck on the details of each property boundary, who had a deed, what the surveyor said. But at the end of the day, it's what, 148 acres? And we want the two towns to own those 148 acres? So why can't there just be a set price to negotiate ownership of all that land and set aside the nuances of the, of the property line disputes? I suppose, I hope there's a question in that. It seems fairly straightforward, but obviously it's not. I don't know if you guys can speak to it.
Do you want me to?
I'm sorry?
Do you want me to make a comment?
You can, and I can, I'll go after you.
Thanks, Dave. I think that is the critical question. There's an assumption here that it's about the property line disputes. And my, yeah, I've been in a few business negotiations across my life in, in career. And all along, it has felt to me like that was not really the issue, that that was a bit of a red herring. This board had great urgency in trying to resolve those issues in non-public, not in public view. And we, I, I think it's amazing how this board maintained the airtight room in non-public, which we have to do as a board. We have no choice but to proceed that way. I'm very proud of this board for not leaking information, being very disciplined about not responding to allegations. My spidey sense tells me that's not the real issue, that this boundary dispute is not the real issue. I don't know what the real issue is, and I'm not going to speculate because I don't know. But I don't think it's about that, because for close to six months, five and a half months, we've been trying to engage, and it's been very difficult to engage. And I don't know what that's about. But my spidey sense tells me the boundary dispute may be a bit of a red herring and an excuse for not moving forward. And I don't know why. I don't have an explanation. But that's what it feels like to me. Again, this board acted with great urgency behind the scenes. I won't say it was a five-alarm fire, because we're very orderly in how we proceed and how we direct town employees and council. But we gave them a lot of urgency in our meetings in non-public. So I don't know what's going on. But my spidey sense tells me it's not about the boundary dispute.
So for the technical and legal aspects of your questions, we have our town planner, we also have our counsel attorney, Laura Specter-Morgan, with us. But I would like to just continue where Selectman Chartran left off in that, you know, we've been having conversations with our counsel and with our town planner and our town manager long before this project was presented to the board in December 2023. We've been looking at this piece of land, and we've been looking at what some of the questions are. When you all came before us in December of 2023 with this exciting project, you know, we never know how an election's going to turn out, but we had a pretty good feeling that overwhelmingly folks in town were going to support it. So as far back as January, that's when we started really having aggressive discussions with the property owner so that we could move this along, knowing in our hearts that this was going to pass in March. And understanding how timely and, and how when things get into litigation, they can crawl and how time-consuming it is, we took a proactive approach, we made an offer. And it wasn't a take or to leave it, it was we made an offer. And we didn't just make the offer and walk away. We made the offer and we continued to try to initiate conversation from January. And I believe, and I don't know exactly when, February, March is when the family retained counsel, and we continued having communication with counsel, or trying to have communication with counsel. But you can't force another party to talk when they don't respond, or when they do respond and it's not an answer. So when I, when I said to you in my statement that in January, we made an offer, and it wasn't until last Friday that we finally got an answer, it wasn't from lack of trying over six months. At my suggestion, counsel reached out to the rug family a little while ago, offering mediation. Mediation doesn't take as much time as litigation. You get before mediator, and I do this in my day job, when you go before mediator, things get resolved and both parties walk away, sort of unhappy, but end up being happy because it gets resolved. We offered mediation and they declined mediation. I asked for a meeting as Chair of the Select Board to meet with the family face-to-face, a very cordial meeting, prior to any of this coming out from the land trust with their two-page document, prior to an article in the newspaper. This was not reactionary. I did this, I offered this meeting with the family prior to us knowing that this was not going to happen. And we did not get an answer, and they did not accept my invitation until the day after an article came out in the newspaper. And I was happy that they met, a little late, but I was happy that they met. And we sat for an hour and a half. I will tell you that their attorney left the meeting after 10 minutes. Too bad. Our stayed. And the conversation was really between the town planner, me, and the family. And our attorney sat in the corner. And it wasn't two lawyers talking, it was two parties talking. And I asked the question repeatedly, can we save this? What do we need to do? Can we continue talking? And after an hour of some raised voices aimed at me, I finally got the answer. It was not the answer I wanted. It's not the answer you wanted, but it was the answer. So I read it in my statement that I wrote, and I don't usually read, I usually talk off the cuff. But on this one, I wrote it. I wrote it this weekend because I wanted to make sure I got every single word right and that you understood what we were doing. But in the last part of my statement, I said that when and if the family wants to continue discussions, we are ready. We know that our constituents are excited about this project. We are excited about this project. And we don't disagree with everything you've said about the land. We love your signs. We've loved your signs since December, we've loved the things that you wear, we loved seeing you come out and march and vote. We want to do something. However, it does take two. It does take two. And I'll pause, and, and we have our attorney here, we have Mr. Sharpples here. I know there were some technical questions asked, sir, from you and some of the other people before you, so I'll pause. And Laura, I don't know if you had anything to add.
Well, I think your question was, isn't this as easy as saying, here's all the land, here's the price? What does it matter where the individual boundaries are? And yeah, at the end of the day, it is that simple. The question is, what's the price? And that is the sticking point. And the rugs have gotten, given zero credence to the town's claims of ownership of these properties. And because of that, there's been limited, if any, movement on the price. And the selectmen feel very strongly they should not be paying for property that the town already owns.
Can I follow up?
Please.
So, and I apologize to, I don't mean to monopolize here, I just couldn't figure out how to sneak out of the room. But my sense is that there was a number that Southeast Land Trust and, what is it, Public Land Trust? Trust for Public Land were working with, along with the town, and that Newfields had a number that they were working with when they held a vote. So there was a number. And there was a set number of acres. And whether we divide the number of acres or the, the amount of money by 140 acres or 148 acres, at the end, the lump sum is the same. So if I understand what you're saying now, the town was making an effort to lower the ultimate purchase price, is that correct?
I think it would have been the town's goal to have some credit towards what the town was paying for the land that it had, at the very least, a warranty deed to.
Right. But if, if the will of the people at the end was basically to spend the lump sum that we all kind of had in mind to ultimately own.
That's the tricky question, is that in the warrant article of the citizen's petition, there was no, it was.
Right.
Do you want the town to investigate this project? There were no dollar figures in that warrant article. So the message sent to the Select Board was, yes, overwhelmingly, take the next step. But there were no dollars. And, and again, as stewards of town property and taxpayer, I guess, you know, I'm not going to speak for my colleagues, but for me, if I were to go and ask on a warrant article for tax dollars to be spent on something that we already own, to me, I'm breaking my oath of office and committing malpractice. And, and that's where I'm coming from.
Understood. I mean, you guys have a duty to safeguard the lands and the, and the tax dollars of the town.
In other words, we're not bartering, we're, we're trying to do what's right by the taxpayers.
But while I understand that we didn't vote on a warrant article that had a number in it, Newfields had a number that they were working with.
That's correct.
And I assume that the sort of per-acre price that the rugs were looking for was consistent, right? So, so they weren't going to try to get more per acre from Exeter than they were from Newfields. Right? So our portion would have been proportionate with what Newfields was voting on. In other words, it just seems like there must have been a number out there that seemed reasonable to the parties in order to move this as far as it got. Maybe I'm missing something.
The Select Board didn't initiate this, this was a citizen's petition and an effort This was a citizen's petition and an effort by citizens. The trust for public lands sold. So we're working within the framework that others created. We have our oath of office and our obligation and the rules of the road for operating as a select board. And so we have some restrictions that aren't there on the other side of the negotiation. And because Newfields had a, a dollar amount, their way was clear and there were no boundary disputes. But again, I go back, I got to tell you, I don't think it's about the boundary dispute. It doesn't feel like it is. I think that's what people are referencing and we're getting focused in on that. But to me, the lack of engagement with us, that speaks volumes to me. Like what is, what is that about? What's going on behind the scenes that I don't know? I, I don't have an answer. But it, it, it trips my trigger when someone doesn't engage, when we're trying to diligently negotiate.
And the numbers that were presented to the select board in those two meetings were presented by the spokesperson of the trust of the public land. And they were, they were estimated numbers based on grants and other things. So those were the, on those two meetings, those were the numbers that we saw. Dave, I don't know if you, did you have anything to add?
Not about that one, but you had said there are other questions. There's a couple of questions I wrote down that I don't think we answered out of.
I have copies of your.
Yeah, no, I, I wrote them. I think I wrote the ones down that I didn't answer. So let me give you a, give it a shot and then we can say. Can you share what the town's position is? You know, we have shared what we could, can share so far about the warranty deed and so forth. Other, you know, is protected under attorney client. Legal counsel's here and that's all I could say. No, you asked about survey work and title work. We haven't done any survey work. What we did do was title work, what before the rugs did title work and, and after, and it's all been inconclusive. The final one, any immediate action can the town, any, you know, can the town take any immediate action or what immediate action can the town take? The rugs own the property. They have a right to do whatever they want to do. So we have no control over that. We can make offers. We can offer to come to the table, but ultimately it's up to them to negotiate at least what they own. And most of it's in Newfields. As you saw the map, you know, that was most, there's about 37. They own the two parcels in between there, you know, in Exeter. Well, according to the deeds. Did I, did I get them all?
Could you just go up to the mic and we'd love to have your question? She can use yours. Please make it easier.
I'm assuming, maybe incorrectly, but I'm assuming since there's this dispute with multiple layers, that Rug would not be able to sell that land to a developer until something is resolved. Is that correct?
It's going to depend on whether or not that developer is willing to assume this title dispute. They can sell it, but whoever buys it is still going to have to deal with this problem. I cannot opine on that.
Mr. Kovar, can we, we have one question up here and then we'll, thank you.
Hi, Tara Barker, York, Maine. Spend my time here in New Hampshire.
Before you, if you're, if you're not an Exeter resident, we have to just check. Do we have any objections?
No.
Go ahead, please.
So at this point, we have really no action that we can take moving forward with the rugs. However, has the town or the board considered a plan, putting a plan in place to save funds or put funds aside in order to be able to acquire the land in the future? In case the rugs change their mind?
So if the rugs change their mind, we would still have to do what we were going to do anyway. And it would have to go on the ballot in March. And the voters would have to vote in favor of raising an appropriate of the money.
Through cap, through the capital improvement?
Correct.
That's what was my question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kovar.
David Kovar, 38, Cross Road. Mostly observations. I spend an enormous amount of time more on the northern part of the property, mostly up in Newfields. All times of the year observe enormous amounts of wildlife. And the wildlife preservation is similar and perhaps a greater magnitude to the wildlife preservation issues that we're dealing with for pickpocket and things like that. It's incredibly important. I deeply respect all the mountain bikers who not only use property, they take incredibly good care of the property. And that alone has created value in that property. They have made an investment in the property. They have not marketed the property per se, but they have presented the property to other people in the community. So it's a destination. And so there is economic benefit to the community already through this. And so I think that a lot, a lot of people invested in this. Two observations. One is from the map. As I understand it, the bulk of that property is north of Exeter. Is that correct? So even if the, that one chunk of land of some number of acres is in dispute, somebody could sell, the rugs could sell off that northern part, which is not under dispute. That could all be developed. And no matter what Exeter does with respect to whether we countersue or whatever on that one chunk of land, we can't stop the rugs from selling that northern part of the property to somebody else and having it be developed. And the title dispute doesn't come into a play if they do that. I'm seeing odds here. So that's part of the problem we have here. I tend to agree with you. There's something odd about the negotiations and I'm going to come off as an overly educated liberal white old male. I apologize. I am those things, but I'm also very passionate about clear communication and understanding what's going on and things like that. It is odd to me that in the negotiation process, they started with here are the property lines and what they are. And then as, as everybody's going forward on what appeared to be good faith negotiations, those property lines didn't shrink. They expanded and didn't even, and they expanded into property that as far as I can tell, Exeter has a clear deed to. And it's on the public record already. So that makes me believe that the negotiations may not have been in good faith. And I'm not sure why, but I do hope that we can all stay engaged as much as possible and see how those negotiations go out. Because it could just be a negotiating ploy. It could be somebody stepping back from the table, saying, we're done, having a cooling off period and a month from now saying, okay, let's have another conversation. That does not mean that we should take off the pressure. That does not mean that you should stop advocating. It should not mean that you should stop posting and all the rest of the things. We should not take the pressure off. But let's try to figure out what's going on behind the scenes. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Kovar. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Mike Mackey from Newfields.
No objections, correct?
No objections.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight, giving me a passport to be in Exeter. And I'm speaking on behalf of, I'm as a 17-year resident of the town of Newfields. And I'm speaking as a representative of a large group of Newfields citizen volunteers. Not as colorful as Vanessa, but you know, we worked hard at it. And Jenny Wilson from the Deer Trees Association is here as well. So I'm speaking on behalf of that group as well. All of whom worked hard in support of the acquisition of the rug property. And so I kind of feel that I'm speaking, the horse is out of the barn, so to speak now. But I'll go through this anyway. Privatest event. So for over a year, we worked to build support for the acquisition of the rug property. We had a unanimous vote of the Newfields select board against the project and active opposition by two to three members. But we persevered, got nearly 70% of the voters supporting Warren Article I, authorizing 3.7 million in funding, two and a half million of which was a loan from the Clean Water Fund of New Hampshire for the Newfields portion of the rug property. That's a heavy lift for our little town. And it serves as a compelling statement of our community's commitment to preserving this green space. So March 13th, we think the day after the Newfields vote, the battle was won. We're, we knew there was a boundary dispute. We, we, along with the trust for public land, had a lot of communication with the rugs about that there was an issue out there. It needed to be resolved. And we optimistically looked at it as a bump in the road. Surely reason would prevail in view of the overwhelming support of the conservation project as expressed by voters of both communities. So we went to work on grant applications, loan applications, public fundraising. As Vanessa said, over three million raised. So it's incredibly disappointing and beyond frustrating. The dispute whose origins date back to 2005 and for which the Rug family provided substantial title and survey research to Exeter in July of 2023 could not be resolved in one year from July up to this point or nor following the results of the March election. And which ended, basically the project is done because the funding deadline expired. So for public funding purposes, we're done. So from the Newfields perspective, we feel betrayed by the inaction and the lack of initiative displayed by the Exeter town government and its employees. And again, this is, it's a strong statement. And I think there's a lot of arguments on both sides. But from sitting in Newfields, that's what it looks like. And we have a different perspective.
It ain't true.
And so we had a unique opportunity to conserve 148 acres of public access green space, overwhelmingly supported by the voters of both towns. We expected Exeter's government would be part of the solution, not the problem. And it was disappointing that things didn't go better than this. And it's, it's really a shame because we really missed an opportunity. And I guess my major question is, and I appreciate there's always at least three sides to every story. But since there was an issue in July of 2023, where they presented documentation and this project was underway in July of 2023, it was really moving along. Where was the initiative to move along with getting the rugs to work with Exeter or the communication with Newfields to get the rugs to work along? Because it just seems like we lost a great deal of time from an outsider perspective in terms of working with them and getting some responsive and collaborative approach to getting a deal done. And it just seems like a long time elapsed before things got to, here we are in May and we're out of luck. So I appreciate the time for letting me speak. Some strong statements. I guess it expresses the frustration of our group and it really is not meant personally to anyone here. And I appreciate the work that everyone does in Exeter and what you do for your town. So thanks for the time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Ring. I live at 24 String Bridge here in Exeter, apartment S2, not 52, S2, despite how I write it. They always mess it up. I have been a civil engineer for 35 years and I've done a lot of projects. One of my projects was job number 02004, the Forest Ridge subdivision in 2004. And of course, that was for Eric Chinberg. And we had a survey done by one engineer and then we did the subdivision plans based on the survey that Bedford Design Consultants had done. And those were recorded at the registry. I would like to also thank the planning, the select board and Mr. Sharples for all the work that you guys have done, given attention to this matter. I should have paid better attention over the last 18 months to what was going on. And I apologize that I did not do that. I understand that Donald Wilson is a surveyor for the rugs in the state of New Hampshire. He is the god of survey, I have to say. Surveyors have disabute disagreements once in a while and tax maps are frequently wrong, especially when you're talking about woodlots out in the back of all these lands. If it's on the road, it, the tax maps are generally more accurate. I would be happy to help if there's any way to assist the process. I haven't reviewed those, reviewed those tax maps or our boundary plans. I'm an engineer, a civil engineer. I'm not the surveyor, but I was the principal in charge and the project manager for that project. And as, as you know, I've been doing work in Exeter for 30 years. So I'll be happy to help if there's any way that I could be of assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ring.
Hi, my name is Dan Longhope, Seven Ridge Crest Drive. I have been living in town here since 2009 and been riding those trails since my daughter was an infant and she graduated from Exeter High School this past weekend. So I know nearly every rock and tree and root. I've fallen on most of them. Stumbled and tripped my way through those trails, snowshoeing, hiking, mountain biking, bird watching, you know. I've, I'm part of the Fort Rock Riders, part of the ragtag group of volunteers who go out there and take care of those trails and make them what they are. And, you know, we came in here with a written statement and very, you know, after reading that story in Seacoast Online, and there's some pretty harsh language used in that. And I'm definitely ready to find a bad guy and find fault and call people to accountability. And I don't know who that is yet. I don't know, you know, like we said, there's three sides to every story. And we're hearing one here and we're not sitting in anybody else's living room to hear another story and we don't get to see the video evidence to hear the, to see the third side of it. But I do want to express my disappointment, my frustration, my anger that this is going south in the way that it is. It is really, I was riding last week and as I'm going through these trails, I'm thinking, oh, this is going to be somebody's living room. This is somebody's pool. Oh, I'm jumping up over somebody's kitchen cabinet right now. And the idea that my grandchildren could be going for a ride down 85 and my daughter could be saying, just like all of us have over the last 40, 50 years, right? There, that neighborhood right over there, we used to mountain bike over there. And that's going to be us once again here in Exeter, you know, another incredible space. Now it's not, there's still the southern portion. There's still the Exeter side that's left. I will absolutely dedicate myself to making sure that that gets taken care of and is used in as much recreation and conservation as possible. But, you know, we're, we'd like to know what happened here. What was the breakdown? If we can put things back together, we'd love to see that. But you just brought up questions that we've dug up from going back before the Chinberg project. There's stuff that is pretty open-ended before 2001, you know, what, at what point does, you know, it's just, it's land, it's woods. We're bickering over what seems like such petty things when we're talking about relatively, you know, keeping this land in recreational conservation in perpetu, in perpetuity. It, it just seems so petty. And I think I speak for those of us who use this property as, in all the various ways we do, that this is really just a gut punch, an absolute gut punch after being drawn along for so long in what seemed like such an incredibly helpful. I mean, I go back and I look at how that property was 10 years ago when it was a couple of trails and some snowmobile trails. And that's it. A couple of single track, couple, you know, and that was, and there was like almost no reason to go all the way up there. And an effort has been made over the last five years to increase the value, recreational value of that land. And many of the faces I see in here have been out there with our, our hose and our shovels and our pickaxes and building those trails. And I mean, we had Watson lot overflowing, right? All of a sudden show up and there's parking, no parking signs on either side of the street because we can't get, keep people from wanting to ride on that very property that we've all been discussing and wanting to hike and wanting to. We all know what gets done out there and we all love that land. And it's just such a disappointment. And to come back and to get that 88% vote, you know, we don't get mandates like that in the United States. You couldn't put something that said, we're going to not let people, you know, pour. pour gasoline in their children's sippy cups, and you couldn't get an 88% agreement on that. And, and here we are. Man. I want to thank everyone who's participated, and, um, I'd like to, let's save this property. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Victor DeLeo, Levin Captain's Way. Since this is on the record, I first want to say thank you to the planner, thank you to the board, thank you for everything you've done. Trust has all been done in, in, in the greatest way. My only thing I want to say is because this is on the record, I want to say, first of all, to the Rugg family that I want to be thankful that they even brought it to the table from the first place, and whatever we can do, a cry to them, I guess, is that to make it right, whatever we can do on us as a, as a community, as a board, please let us know. And obviously, with the support of this room, we would be there to make those steps happen. That's all.
Thank you very much.
Gabe Claff, I live at Woodbridge Lane. Just want to comment on a couple of things and tie together a few points I think that came up tonight. First and foremost, although mountain bikers get all the credit, uh, I'm a hunter, so they're the cool guys, but I'm the guy, you know, who depends on a lot of public land here in the town of Exeter to go out and do what I enjoy. I also mountain bike a little bit and hike, but, uh, had a couple of very neat experiences on the rug property, um, over the course of my time, including meeting Derek out on the trails. Phenomenal guy, you know, and again, when this project came up, you gotta love the passion that the guy has for the woods and the land and all the people who enjoy it, right? And this family has kept this property open for us to be out there and enjoy our passions, enjoy the land, photograph wildlife, ride the trails, hike, take our families out there. The absolute importance of that I cannot understate, right? We live in the state of New Hampshire where we can go on lands that aren't posted without landowner permission. That is huge. I treasure that. Fishing game has a landowner relations program. That is for a reason. And my concern with this process is that we, as a town and a community, did not do enough to break down the red tape for these people. I understand the laws, I understand the policies, I used to be in law enforcement, I get it. I'm a federal employee, I get it. But you're not dealing with a massive corporation here who's trying to hoard their pennies and negotiate for every little cent. You're dealing with a family. Who has outwardly given us such a treasure in this land and the experiences that it offers. I think it's time to come up a little bit and pull out the limit stops for these folks to the absolute best of our ability. Exhaust all options, look at everything. The amount of wildlife that's back there on that property, we will never get that back. If we bulldoze it and excavate it, it's gone. We've seen that happen in our neighborhood, bulldozers and excavators at every turn, it's gone. This is a once-in-a-lifetime golden goose opportunity, and I appreciate all the insights, sir, that you gave about what you did to humanize this and keep those dealings between two parties, you know, look at the options that are out there, but I, I just can't believe that we've done enough to pull out those limit stops and explore all available options to save this land. Again, this family has done their due diligence. I was sitting in a tree stand looking out one morning in the fall, watching surveyors go by, and I got down and had a nice conversation with these folks out there, walking every inch, doing their due diligence to make sure that they knew what was right. And as somebody else just commented on, from what I understand, they hired one of the best in the business to do those surveys, right? So, I question the proof that's out there, I, and I question, have we done enough to preserve this opportunity for people like me and people like everyone in here who treasure this and will never get it back if we miss this opportunity? So, again, you're dealing with a family who wants to do the right thing. There's some insinuations, I think, out there from people in this crowd even that maybe they think their motivation changed along the way, you know, spidey senses tinkling. I get it. I get that you can't say certain things that happen behind closed doors, but we need a little bit more than just a hunch that in an insinuation that this family's motivation changed, and that's why all of a sudden we have a broken deal. I, I simply cannot believe that. So, in closing, please think about this, please pull out all those limit stops and explore all available options. Please keep those lines of communication open with that family, and please be listening. When we all leave this room and they sleep on what was said here tonight, you sleep on it? Let's keep those ears open, and please, please, let's do this right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Follow-up. Vanessa Lazar, Woodbridge. So, okay, this was a big blow. We, we lost. Initially, when we started this project, we were told by the family that both parcels had to be sold together. That's what we were told when we were trying to raise money. From what I understand, development looks like, it, it doesn't look like there, there is a plan to develop the Exeter portion, yet. So, if the development starts, they, they say they sell the Newfields portion to a developer, which is gonna be devastating, and the houses start going in, the, because of the, the, all of the, what's going on here in Exeter with that little strip of land and all the little things, can they, you said they can sell it even with all of this red tape attached? So, what I'm saying is, is I think it's possible for us to still separate the two parcels and perhaps keep them negotiating and, and just conserve the Exeter portion at the very least. So, I mean, I know that Trust for Public Land and Seltz said there are still some opportunities for us to raise that amount of money. We just, I mean, with the money for the 6.8, we could have raised that and just paid them. I mean, everybody was coming to us with questions when we lost the vote, saying, what do you mean? It was just a small amount of money, like, we could have raised $250,000 and just made everybody happy, but that's, ship has sailed. What I want to know is, can we still, um, I mean, we'll talk to them, we, we've been writing letters. We want to see if maybe perhaps they, they can get, you know, a little bit of the, the family, the money for the Newfield side and the Exeter portion, the 47 acres there could perhaps still be saved. And I think you're willing to help us do that?
Vanessa, I'm gonna say again, um, and I, I agree with you, I have three people that were in the room with me last Friday. First of all, in reject, in rejecting our offer, the family did not indicate to us what they're doing, so I can't speculate on that. But to your question, um, I made it very clear when they left that we are open to continuing discussion. Our door is open, and I couldn't have been clearer Friday morning.
Okay.
So, the answer's yes. If they, if they are willing to talk with us, we're still here.
Okay.
And, you know, we are committed.
We're where we always have been.
Right. We, that hasn't changed, and, you know, I, I didn't want to get into it, and all I'm gonna say is, is that I just, you know, I was hoping for more of a discussion. Instead, I got yelled at for an hour. And I ended it with, we are still open to discussing this with you, and we look forward to hearing from you. And that's, we are, that, that's it. We are, we are willing to listen, we are willing to keep moving on this, doing what we have to do, but I, I don't have any direction from them, and they own the property.
Well, their position is you're stealing their land. I mean, because you weren't talking to us when they were, and that's what we, we found out. So, we clearly have to do more work here. Some, I mean, we have to, we have to figure this out. We can't just keep saying, well, no, we're right, and you, your, your stuff is wrong. Like, we have to make a little bit more.
I can't disagree with you, but, but remember, they didn't reject our offer until Friday morning, like, one business day ago. So, we know, we're, we're still thinking about what our next steps are.
Okay.
Okay? I can promise you, if they are willing to discuss with us and continue, um, we are too. But it has been almost six months of almost one-sided conversations, and that's hard. And, and again, I'm gonna reiterate again, and I don't like to repeat myself, but I'm going to, that when we made the offer in January, two months before the election, in anticipation of 88%, because you're right, that doesn't happen every day, I wish it did more often, um, but we anticipated that. We didn't just drop it in January. We kept reaching out and reaching out and reaching out. And that's why I asked to meet face-to-face, because, no offense, Laura, but when attorneys get involved, attorneys get involved. And sometimes a fresh face and a fresh voice and a fresh set of eyes coming in, and I wanted to meet with the family. I wanted to look them in the eye, across the table, and have a conversation. So, our door's open and our phone is ready, and we'll continue to communicate.
I, I, I want to reiterate, I'm gonna repeat myself if I can, Mr. Chair.
Get me off the hook.
I agreed to come back on this board after having left. I served for six years from 2012 to 2018. I left because it was just too big a lift for me personally. I agreed to come back and serve with these four people because they are the most exceptional people that I've ever served with. That's the only thing that brought me back, and I have been so frustrated that a talented board that is so ethical and so disciplined and just so, they've got great political antenna. They, they knew that thing was gonna pass by overwhelmingly. We were working ahead, and it's just been so frustrating not to have, not to have the talents of this board be able to resolve this issue and, and to have one-sided communication, as Chairman Papa Constantis just said. It's been the most frustrating experience of my life, and I, I adore these four people. It is, I've done a lot of volunteer work, I've served on a lot of boards, commissions, committees. This is the best group I've ever served with, and it shocks me that we are where we are because I thought we were gonna resolve this, and, and we just didn't get any communication.
We appreciate everything you did. I think the frustration was is that the rugs were talking, but no one here was, out of respect for the legal process.
But, but you know. Talking to you, but not to us.
But the other thing is in frustration, and I look at our town planner, who's been in the trenches since back in 2017, 2018, and, you know, you are definitely frustrated, we are definitely frustrated, but this gentleman has invested seven years in trying to work with the family, and he, I, I can't tell you how frustrated he's been over the last six months, because, again, he's the, he's the person in the trenches. And, um, and I can't say enough about what he's tried to do, um, you know, he's our town planner, and, and he's as invested in this project as we all are. And, and I can't say enough, and I, and I appreciate the kind words Mr. Sharpton has for the board. I appreciate the sentiments that you've all shared this evening, but, I mean, this gentleman here has gone above and beyond, and, um, he's frustrated too. We're all frustrated, but we all want to see this happen.
Well, thank you all, and we'll work on the family.
And, and just, could I add one more?
Yep, and then I think Mr. Kovar had his.
Oh.
No, go ahead.
Okay. I, I just want to remind everyone how committed Exeter is to conservation land. Mr. Sharple's, correct me if I'm wrong, I think about a third, if maybe a little over, of our land in Exeter is in conservation. So, maybe that was our antenna to know the support that was gonna happen with this rugs property, but I, I just want to remind everyone that Exeter is very committed to conservation land. We have been for a very long time, and I believe we're number two under Durham in the state. So, we, we are very respectful for this, for what you're trying to do and do support it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Cynthia Fry, Macamber, Woodbridge Lane in Exeter. I just had a quick question for Mr. Sharple's. When you mentioned something, I don't know if I caught it exactly, but we've been talking about 47 acres in Exeter, and I think you said that amount is incorrect. Could you clarify that for me, please?
Yeah, without having the GIS in front of me to, to, I think the town has deeds to 37 acres, about, maybe a little over 37 acres of that 48. The rugs have deeds to 11 of those acres.
So, there's a whole lot more than 6.8 acres under question?
Correct.
And I don't know if this is inappropriate, but I'd like to ask the board if you could clarify for us what the offer that was made to the rugs was back in January.
I don't, I mean, it was a.
I think it was mentioned by someone in, in a letter.
In the letter, yeah.
I think that's.
You said that some.
Can I summarize it really quickly?
Go ahead.
Yes, please. So, essentially, the town was willing to give up all of the land that it had acquired by tax deed in exchange for the rugs giving up the 6.8 acres that they claimed that the town owns by warranty deed.
What were those numbers?
About 30, about 30 acres, we would forego all our claims on 30 acres north of 1916, and then they would forego the claims on the 6.8 acres on 1916 because we held the warranty deed on them.
Dave, can you describe the process that led us to have that warranty deed?
Thank you for your question.
Because we haven't really done that.
Well, just a warranty deed, you, you, it was quickly, there's kind of a couple types of deed. There's a, you, you read a deed, if you ever pulled one up, it either says quick claim or it says warranty deed. A quick claim is, it's, you're buying it, I make no claims to actually what you're buying. So, quick claim deed is, you know, you, you don't know. A warranty deed is they've done title work, they've, they've, they're convinced that there's no third-party claims against us, and they.
John did that title work, right?
And they warranty, no, they, the, uh.
The engineer wouldn't have done the title work.
No, the engineer wouldn't have, the developer would have at that time. And done title work, pulls title insurance on it, and then provides the town with a warranty deed saying, we warranty this, we know we own it, and this is, we're giving it to you, and.
Well, we got that warranty deed because we gave the developer certain privileges.
Correct. It was, it was in exchange for, uh, you know, when you, when you give open space of a certain size, you get a density bonus so you can add more units to the Forest Ridge subdivision.
So, our conservation efforts have led to us being given this warranty deed, and it's.
Correct.
Yeah, so, so we, the Select Board can't just walk away from the 6.8 acres warranty deed. It was, it was a, a development deal that Chinberg did with the town, and for us to walk away from that, we really would be violating our oath. So, again, we made a very reasonable offer to them, and they, they didn't respond, and ultimately, they rejected it. But we, we can't just give them that 6.8 acres. That would be illegal, and we would be breaking our oath of office.
Have you been paying taxes on it, David?
If you have a question, you have to go up to the, I'm sorry, that's okay.
My name's Scott Dahl, I'm from, actually, from East Hampstead, Hampshire.
No objections, go ahead.
Thank you. So, I don't have a lot of details, but one thing I'm curious about, and I'm gonna estimate that maybe the rugs have owned the land for at least 20 years, potentially.
Generation.
Oh, it's been generations.
Generations.
And is the, that, these parcels we're talking about, are they in current use, or are they, what's the?
They're under conservation easement.
Conservation easement.
Held with the, well, the, the town acquired, well, warranty deed, one, about seven acres, 15 acres through a tax auction in like 1940-something, and then the other five parcels totaling whatever that is, another 15 acres among the five parcels are owned by tax collector deeds. No one pays, we, we own them, and then they dedicated, the Select Board gave them to the Conservation Commission.
Okay, so.
No one pays taxes.
So, there was no.
So, no one pays taxes on them because they're, we were under the understanding the town of Exeter owned all these parcels, and that's what our records show.
Okay, yeah, so that's what I was, you, it was described that he was frustrated at the meeting and yelling, so I'm trying to come up with a scenario as to why he's mad. Is he, you know, conceivably gonna be out potential tax money that he's paid on this land that suddenly isn't his, you know, so, that was it. Thank you.
Mr. Kovar, you are definitely next.
Do you want to go? I'm Shannon Turner, also from East Hampstead.
No objection.
So, earlier, and maybe I misunderstood, but the Newfields section of this, you were saying that the, the way that their warrant article was written had a dollar amount attached to it, or a dollar. Now, that wasn't the case with the Exeter warrant article? to it, or a dollar. Now, that wasn't the case with the Exeter warrant articles, right? So if it was written in there, then you guys would have been stuck with that dollar amount, and there would have been no negotiation, and maybe no butting of heads?
So war, the warrant article in the March 24, our most recent election, was a citizens' petition asking the town, basically, whether they had the appetite to then go before the select board this year to put a CIP warrant article for March 25 to purchase the Exeter land. So it was a citizens' petition that was more advisory, like, would the town be interested in?
So I guess my question is, if the warrant article was written differently to have a dollar amount attached to it, similar to how Newfields wrote theirs, would that have made this process easier where, no?
No.
It would have given the selectmen a cap of what they could spend on the land, but it probably wouldn't have obligated them to spend all of that money, particularly if it turned out the town owned some of the land already.
Okay. So, because the way you guys spoke earlier, it sounded like maybe that was, what was the dollar amount was the sticking point. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your question.
Tara, again. Just to kind of add on to Shannon's question, do you happen to have the warrant article with you?
Which one?
The citizens' petition.
I don't have it with me. Melissa?
Because I'd like to hear it, because with some of the language, the way
No, I got it right here.
I'll look at it after. I'll look, oh, look at that.
Mr. Sharples, would you read it, would you read it for us, please?
Yeah, I can read it.
Thank you.
On petition of Tom Jelenek and others to see if the voters in the town of Exeter support the future purchase of approximately 47 acres of property owned by the rug family located north of Oakland's Town Forest and east of Woodridge Lane by the town of Exeter for the purposes of expanding the town-owned Oakland Town Forest and preserving open space, trails, public outdoor recreation, drinking water supplies, and wildlife habitat, to request that the selectmen review the project, including evaluation of potential funding options such as bonds, and to advise and authorize the selectmen to apply for, obtain, accept, and pass through any federal or state grants, loans, or private gifts, if any, which may be available for said acquisition in collaboration with and facilitated by conservation organizations. Majority vote required.
Thank you.
And that passed with 2,222 votes.
Yeah, to 340 noes. 88% there.
Can I ask one more question?
Please.
I just wanted clarification, because I think there's a couple of people up in the hallway who also might have the same question. The warranty deed, the property that has warranty deed, is that owned by the town, or is that owned by the rugs?
Owned by the town.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
May I, yeah, because the warrant article says 47 acres of property owned by the rug family. They, they assume that the 47 acres was owned by the rug family. The town has deeds, I, you know, I'm not claiming ownership right now, but the town has deeds on about 37 of those acres.
So the ownership is disputed.
So there's, so there's 10 acres in dispute, is what you're saying? No, there's I'm sorry, how many?
37 acres in dispute.
37?
Ish.
37 of the 47.
Yeah, correct.
Didn't you say that you made a plan with him that you would give most of that, all of that, except for 6.8?
We made an offer.
Well, how can you do that if you can't do the 6.8? I don't understand. You said that it would be illegal, and you would be violating your oath, and blah, blah.
The 6.8. We did not feel we could do that.
Why is it different?
Because it's a warranty deed.
But the warranty deed actually waives any issues for the buyer. A warranty deed does that.
The warranty deed gives the town a warranty from the party we got it from, Mr. Chinburg, that he had good title, and that we are getting good title.
So we got good title from Chinburg?
Correct.
When we sell that property, or give it away for a dollar, we would also be carrying forward that warranty deed, correct?
We would be able to give a warranty deed. The concern is, as the fiduciaries to the town, does it, is it in the town and the taxpayer's best interest to give away land for a dollar? That's a policy decision that I'm not going to weigh in on. But now, as to your question, tax deeds are different. And these tax deeds in particular are different, and I'm not going to get into the details of that.
I'm so sorry, I don't know your name.
I'm Laura.
Laura. So in the, in the warrant article, it states here that the selectmen have, has been, they have been advised and authorized to apply, obtain, accept, pass through. So really, the taxpayers gave you their go-ahead to do that, and to lose all this property over one piece of property that's warranted, doesn't seem like a whole lot of sense, unless I might be missing something. I'm a little bit behind the eight ball here.
They got the authority to apply for, obtain, accept, and pass through grants. They didn't get the authority to give away land for nothing.
But you're not, you're not necessarily giving it away. You're, you're save, you're, you're trading it to save a bigger value for your community.
And now we're on the legal issues and into the policy issues.
Right. Which is, this is what I've done my whole life, so I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Alex Durden-Skae from Stratum.
No objection.
Thank you. Longtime user and volunteer of this land. And I was here when this first came up to the select board, and you were all extremely supportive. That's very clear, and thank you for that. I think that the frustration that is in the room is not with you individually. Unfortunately, you're the face of government. And there's a lot of bureaucracy in government, as we know, sometimes. And there's a lot, I believe, a lot of facts here on the table that are in dispute, or not facts, they're, we don't know if they're facts. Can't speak to the rugs' individual interests, but I think there's an overwhelming sense that there's been some level of disrespect, or that they haven't, their efforts haven't been met by the town digging into its own vault of information, for example. The gentleman who was a civil engineer during the Chinburg development, obviously, that was a big effort. I'd be very curious to know if the meeting minutes from that timeframe are available for review. It was pre-digital minutes. We've looked. I've spent a lot of time on the website as a, as an amateur map dork. I've seen lots of inconsistencies that in the face of the rugs hiring Don Wilson, it's, it seems like the gold standard of surveyors is here. And then we look at that map, and we know that the rugs own north of Newfields, and they have 10.2 acres that is discontinuous from that. Doesn't, it defies logic. Why is it discontinuous from their Newfields land? The town says, the, the rugs say they own 47 acres. The town is saying they only own 10. Now the town's willing to put 30 of those acres back on the table. I've looked at tax maps that show those, one of those two long slivers of property that the rugs supposedly own. It says the town owns. There's parcels out there that show transfer in 2001. It says owner, prior owner unknown. I mean, these are the kind of things that lead to the questions. And when the rugs have these questions, and they hire the gold standard surveyor, they want to know that the town is also doing an internal audit of these inconsistencies and errors. And that would feel like a level of respect that I think would match the rugs' effort to hire and do this the right way. And so you are not the, the issue that any of us have. Thank you for your support. But I think when people ask what can be done to, to do more here, it's looking into the details, looking into the minutes, looking into that Chinburg transfer in the early 2000s. And those, those things would help the town do more to help move this along, perhaps. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can speak to that minutes thing, because the rugs brought that up about some minutes, and I found them. I have them. In the, during that timeframe, and it wasn't specific to this project, the planning board was behind. So like, the minutes that are on Word, you know, are kind of very general, and just say, kind of say the topic and say any motions, because like, minutes are supposed to have a general discussion and, and motions taken. But the details, Barb McAvoy was the secretary at the time, and we have all those notebooks of all her detailed notes, pages and pages, which you're welcome to the minutes that we have from the meeting, which we have, but they're very, you know, they're very just general. And then we have, we'll share with you all the notes that Barb took down of everything that was discussed. So just come in and see our office, and we'll, we'll get them to you. Thank you.
Mr. Kovar.
So I'm David Kovar, 38 Crossroads. I'm one of the people that it may have, like, I, I can see how it would be perceived that I insinuated certain aspects of the rugs. I apologize to the audience. I apologize to the rugs. Let me restate my feelings, and I emphasize feelings. There's what we are seeing in the public discourse, Seacoast Online, these meetings and things like that. There's what we are hearing about going on in closed meetings, and that's getting reported out. There's a lot that we don't know. And that's where the crux of the dispute lies. It would be very helpful, and everybody's restricted in certain ways about what they can and cannot say. So this is an open invitation to the rugs and to everybody here. And if there's some opportunity to get people together with, potentially with representatives, and I would encourage people to leave the lawyers out of the room. Nothing against lawyers. But if we can sit down and, enormous number of, of successful negotiations and very complex topics have worked their way out, because people sat down and they had dinner together, or they sat down in the middle of the property together and said, hey, we're surrounded by this property, we all want to preserve, and just said, okay, just the three of us, one from each party, or four of us, or however it is, sit down, have a conversation, and understand what the, the things that are not getting said are, and see if we can start slowly working our way through resolving those issues and working our way up to a full resolution of it. And that may not be between the lawyers and the board, that may be between individuals in this room with people that are sort of siding one way or another. And so I will volunteer, as others have volunteered. I'm no expert on this stuff. I'm not a lawyer, all that sort of stuff. But if I can somehow contribute to breaking down some barriers, having conversations, I will. Also, to Alex's point, there's a lot of research that, you've done an enormous amount of research, as have others. And so thank you for all the people who've done research. Let's continue to do that research. There's some unanswered questions here, which should be a matter of public record. The meeting minutes have been offered. If you have doubts about the veracity of meeting minutes or things like that, there's a Freedom of Information Act. There are ways of gathering information that are, may still be worth doing. So let's, when this meeting closes, let's continue to have conversations, and let's collectively see if we can find some way of bridging the communication gap between the legal parties of legal standing, and seeing if we can help resolve those issues. So thank you all.
Thank you. We do, we do have a, we do have somebody online that's had their hand up. I'd like to give them an opportunity, because their hand has been up for some time. Eleanor, good evening. Can you hear us?
Yes, hi, it's Chris Wallstad, Eleanor's husband, one Terry Exeter. No problem, she's here, too. Had a quick question. I understand that of the, like, 40 some odd acres, 30, the, the offer was to forego 30 of them and, and hold on to the 6.8. And I also understand the 6.8, we have a warranty deed, the town has a warranty deed on it. Has the town considered or explored or pursued making a claim on that? Like, since there's a warranty deed, is there a possibility of getting that, like, financially compensated to sort of, you know, ease that, like, issue that you guys were mentioning about not being able to just give it away?
We are exploring that.
I don't know if you heard that, but we are exploring that option.
And just to add on, both to the grantor and also title insurance, we would encourage you to explore both options, especially title insurance, because that would, either the title insurance company would litigate the matter, or they would pay the town for the losses. And so then the town wouldn't be in a position of feeling like it has to give away any property.
It was a donation, so as far as we know, there is no title insurance in favor of the town.
Oh, I thought I heard someone mention earlier that title insurance was part of that
We are not aware
Transfer warranty deed.
We are not aware of any title insurance.
I think it was when Mr. Sharples was just explaining the definitions, the two definitions of the deed.
Yeah, if I said that, I I didn't say we had title insurance.
You didn't say that, though.
No, we don't.
You were trying to educate people on the two different, the quick claim.
The best of our knowledge, we do not have title insurance.
Okay. And did you explain that to the, like, do you think it's possible to explain that to the rugs, if you haven't already, to try and like, help with working through that process?
We have explained that to the rugs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Hi, Karishma, go ahead.
My name is Karishma. I'm from Six Windermere. So back in 2022, my backyard was very ugly, and we worked with Derek Rugg and Nadine Rugg to beautify it. And it's spectacular. And in the process, I've visited Rockcrest Gardens several times, and the love they have for trees and nature is so evident. If you ever visit their space, they allow us to even walk around, even if you're not interested in buying any trees from them. But if you do get a chance to work with them, you, you just realize how kind they are, and how, how much love they have for nature. They even travel to the Pacific Northwest just to visit the forests and the, and land. So I think, based on my, my very short several months of working with them, that they're very, very kind people. And we would love to offer them an olive branch and try to bring them back to the board. I know that from the article, they said they have spent $400,000 on surveying and lawyer fees, et cetera, and I feel really bad for that. But here, the adults here, we, we will die off in about four decades or less. Our children will be gone, so it'll be our, this is really for perpetuity. And so I hope that if Derek and Nadine are listening to this, we would love to work with you. Please don't stop the project. Please help, come back to the table and see how we can resolve this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Nick Nisho, 11 South Street, New Market.
No objection.
I've been going to Fort Rock since like 2017. It's a great place, like, mountain biking there, like, really progressed, and it's taken me all over the country. Pack my bike in a bag now, go ride out west, come back. Fort Rock's always here to ride at. One of the things that I guess kind of troubles me the most is, and I can understand, like, the rugs' position, if they feel like they're being wronged, or giving something away that they think they have claimed to. To me, it seems like they spent an enormous amount of money with a impartial third party, which is one of the best surveyors out there. I haven't seen Exeter really address that or come back and say, we've, we also, you know, I know it's money, and you have to pay to have these services done. But if they have a surveyor, and they just had a massive survey done that everyone agrees is the gold standard, why are we fighting that? And if we're going to fight it, I feel like it needs to be disproven with fact, not just saying, it's always been this way, and that's it.
I, I can't, I can't speak to the expert, but I can speak to the report, that I've read the report. And there is some confusion in the report on some of the summaries regarding the issues that we're talking about. And in fact, during our conversations earlier this year, their attorney even admitted that there was some confusion in the report. So while, you know, I can't, I can't opine on Mr. Wilson's professional expertise, because I'm not in that area of, that's not my area of expertise. And I'm sure he is the gold standard, because I respect Mr. Ring. But I can tell you that the report I read, there were parts of the summary that were very confusing regarding some of these issues that we're speaking to this evening. And, and just to answer your second part of your question, it's not a matter of expending taxpayer dollars to do our own work. It was, it takes time. And this was it takes time. And this was back in late last year. We would still be in the beginning process of trying to get an independent study. So we were trying to move this forward. So that's why we did not. It wasn't because we didn't want to spend money, and it's not because we didn't want to get our own opinion. It's because we, we knew the deadlines, and we wanted to try to move this forward. And we wanted to work with them and their experts' report. Now, Dave, I don't know if you wanted to add anything on that, because that's, you know, you, you've read the report inside and out, and you've shown it to me, and I've read it. But, you know, it, it's not that we didn't want to, we didn't want to spend the money. It's, it's time consuming. And we wouldn't have hit any deadlines.
Thanks. I appreciate that response. And I guess my only, like, follow-up to that is, like, is there an avenue where, it seems like the focus of this negotiation is based on the disputes over property. We do have a, what we consider, like, I guess, a gold standard survey, or done by someone who would produce gold standard work. Is there a path forward where, you know, everything else just kind of gets thrown out? And it's like, this has to be resolved at some point.
Yep.
This can't go on forever, right? I mean, I guess it can, but that's not productive for anybody.
No, and, and totally agree. And as I said to Vanessa earlier, you know, we didn't get the, we didn't get the rejection from the rugs until Friday morning. And now it's Monday evening. So, you know, we, obviously, we know we've, we've got to take some steps, and we need to look and see what those steps are. But it's, it's still, you know, we just got the response on Friday.
That's good to hear. I didn't, that's still on the table.
Mr. Shartran.
Picking up on David's point about getting some folks in the room and having discussions. We have a form of government that allows our citizens wide latitude to basically go past the select board. We have our obligations, and we will uphold our obligations, will uphold our oath. But the citizens can instruct us through a citizen's petition. You are not powerless, folks. In fact, you have all the power in our form of government. Feel free to use it. That's it, to David's point.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Janelle Chandra. I'm from 93 Park Street, Exeter. I've learned a lot today. I have a question. If communication does open up again, I think it may be beneficial to have a panel of people who have spoken tonight passionately, who seem to know the family, and seem to communicate well with the family, and have them in on the communication. I think reminding, when we're in the nitty gritty of the details and the numbers, it's easy to forget what we're here for. And I think having the passionate people with the relationships there to remind everyone in the room, hey, our whole point here is to save this land, might be helpful. And I think it'd be worth considering that. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay. Seeing none, I want to thank everybody for coming out. I want to thank you that I can see out there. I'm sure there are more around the corner. But thank you. Thank you for your signs. Thank you for your commitment. Thank you for your passion. We mean what we say. You know, we are excited about this project. We have been excited about this project. And, you know, we will do what we can if the rugs would like to come back and continue discussions. And Mr. Shartran's absolutely right. If we can't get anywhere, you're the legislative body, and we report to you. So if you put together a citizen's petition, it goes to the ballot.
Get some legal advice if you're going to do that. Make it iron clad, please.
Okay. Seeing no other comment, we'll, go ahead.
No, thanks, everybody. It's great to see you all. And we're here every other Monday night. You can weigh in on a variety of issues.
And/or join a committee of commissions.
She beat me to it.
Before we
Melissa. We're here. Thank you.
This was our Monday night, right?
Before we close our discussion.
We're not done yet.
Did you, did you have any other comment, Selectwoman Gilman?
No, it's all, I've already said everything.
It was just to give them time to switch rooms.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe. Good night. Thank you. Thank you.
This isn't the last we hear of the Rock proper.
I hope not either.
Hope not either. I don't know whose son I'm gonna get.
Yeah, you're gonna take that now.
Look, they're, they're coming up. I can see them coming up.
Laura, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Laura.
Appreciate it. Good to see you.
Thank you, Vanessa. Good night. Thank you.
One more.
He's coming back.
Just in case. I wanted to get my thanks in there. Yes.
Our next agenda item is a continuation from an action item we've had on the last two meetings, which is now a request for the board to consider a peace proclamation. And one of the reasons that we continued this, Selectwoman Cowan, is you weren't here on May 28th. And we felt it was prudent to have all five board members, because Mr. Shartran
I'm sorry, Mr. Char, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's not your fault.
Moses is clearing up.
Because Mr. Shartran had made some revisions, suggested revisions to the proclamation. And the two week period was to allow the board to absorb his suggestions and also take the opportunity to make any other revisions or amendments. So, Selectwoman Shartran, why don't you walk us through your suggested revisions, if you would, and start there?
What I did was I just eliminated a clause about financing. I felt that was beyond our purview to proclaim tax, federal taxes, and where the citizens of Exeter's town taxes go. I, I did not want that in the proclamation, so I deleted that clause entirely. I also eliminated any reference to federal officials. I do not want to instruct any federal officials. I couldn't vote for a proclamation that did that. And, and that's really, those are the two changes I made. Everything else just kind of flows from those two changes. So that's what I came up with before our last meeting. And, and that's where I still am right now. I'm open to discussing further refinements, but I was ready to vote on that at our last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Selectwoman Gilman or Selectwoman Belanger, any comments or thoughts?
I have none.
On that action?
On the action, the proclamation as a whole.
Well, you know, I've had a couple of weeks to talk about this and other people to talk to about this. And, you know, I, I started out fully in support of just sending a letter and with the warning that was had, was a little more reticent at the next meeting because of the form of government that we had. And I heard Mr. Shartran reference it at the time, that we would be representing the whole town in this position, and maybe the whole town doesn't want to have this position. And then since then, I think I've gone even further in that I feel like this is kind of a slippery slope. And that if there's a disagreement about another something that's happening at the federal level, or decisions that are being made at the federal level, that it will come to us again for our opinion or our representation as of the whole town to support or condemn, or whatever the stance is. And that we will be doing that, talking about federal policy at this level, where I can't guarantee I'm representing the whole body of the town.
Thank you. Selectwoman Belanger, any thoughts?
Julie just put my position much more articulately than I have the last two meetings. But yes, I feel, I feel the same way.
Selectwoman Cowan.
I am just sort of catching up on everything that's been happening with the board. And I, I would be, I would be amenable to talking about this and hearing from our constituents, because I think that that's really important, with the understanding that, you know, if this is what you're voting for, and your, and your, your two positions, you know, I, I think I'm, I think I'm catching up on where you all are. So that's, that's where I am.
Okay. Like to open it up to public comment, if there's any. Mr. Kovar?
Purely a question. We've talked about citizen's petitions in the previous. If the board's decision is that, since they cannot represent 100% of the town, and that would be the reason they decided against doing this, can there be a citizen's petition that asks the board to support such a proclamation?
Absolutely.
That, in terms of representative government, democracy, all the rest of these principles that nations founded on, that might be a really good course of action.
That's happened several times on different social policy issues. I have, there's a favorite guy that comes out every, almost every year with some position that he would like us to present to our federal representatives. And, and we do, when the citizens say, do that.
The downside to that would be, it's not till next March.
Right.
Patience, we have to have patience.
Patience sucks. Time sucks. People are dying. Everybody's losing stature. There's all sorts of problems with it. However, if you short circuit democracy, then you're contributing to the problem.
Please, sir.
My name is Bob Collier, and that's Conne Road, C-O-N-N-I-E.
She's got it.
I would, I'd like to ask the group, have you submitted your original letter to Washington, DC? Because I think you, the type of letter that you're asking the board to sign, that's a type of letter that needs to go to DC. You asked them to do it last week, and they were uncomfortable. They're, they're on the spot. And they're, and like you said, they're, if they want to express their view about it, then they could do that individually. And they represent a lot of people. You're asking them to form an opinion, and there's 18,000 different opinions. And I can understand why they would have to not, you know, do what you're asking them to do it. I think you, you made revisions out of three paragraph, two out of three paragraphs that week. So I think that's the type of letter that needs to go directly to Washington, rather than ask the board to, to, to act. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, though, I am comfortable voting yes to this.
Any other comment?
Can you respond?
Please.
So, thank you. So there, oh, Karishma, Sixth Windermere Lane, Manzur, Karishma Manzur. So thank you very much for that comment. There have been nationwide resolutions and efforts. Our elected officials are not always listening to us. So I'm going to paraphrase a quote by a mayor of Richmond. And he said, as a, as an individual, my voice alone may be meaningless. But when I sing in a chorus, we make music that people have to listen to. So if I send a town, and the ten of us send a letter to Washington, it's not going to go anywhere. Even trying to meet with our representative, Chris Pappas, is almost impossible. He's not interested in talking to us or meeting with us. But if we come together as a town, our government has a lot more clout than we do as individuals. And if we do pass this proclamation, it's only calling for peace. We're, we're not trying to point any fingers. We're just asking for peace. We will join over 80 towns and cities nationwide that have passed ceasefire resolutions. So we're not going to be the, we're not trailblazers. We're actually kind of late to the game, but we're, but unfortunately, the genocide continues to this day. So it's better late than never. Major towns and cities have passed it, including, many labor organizations have passed it, including United Auto Workers. There's no reason for United Auto Workers to talk about an international crisis. American Postal Workers Union have called for a ceasefire. Californian Nurses Association, Chicago Teachers Union, Chicago Teachers Union, as well as the NAACP, which is the largest civil rights organization. A lot of times, these organizations don't talk about international issues. But they felt obligated because, for example, if you follow what's going on in Sudan, you know that there's a horrible civil war going on, and many people have died, I think over 100,000, which you might say pales in comparison to, say, 35,000 deaths in Gaza. It's, if you just look at numbers. But the people who are dying in Sudan is not being supported by our government or by our tax dollars. That's why we hurt. This is why we're saying no. We don't want, we want peace everywhere, and we definitely don't want to be complicit in genocide. And at this moment, we're full-blown complicit in the textbook genocide that's going on. There's no ifs and doubts about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Ajitsi, I live at 20 Chestnut Street in Exeter. So on, on democracy, you know, we live in a representative democracy. We empower representatives to make tough decisions in our names. We don't, we don't hold referendums on every, every policy we make. So that would just be one comment. And to that point, there's been some mention of the recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day, that this, this group approved. I don't think that was put to referendum. But maybe, you know, I don't mean to compare that to what's going on now. This is far more immediate, far more visceral. But it is about a balanced interpretation of history and recognizing the victims of that history. And, and I think this board did that. So maybe you could just address that.
Great, thank you.
I have not publicly said any words about what's going on in Gaza since the war started. As mentioned previously, I have a master's degree in international affairs. I went to Ukraine two months after the war kicked off. I'm a passionate supporter of Ukraine. I almost got in a fight with somebody on social media because they were saying things that I found very offensive. So that said, I will now publicly say something about Gaza. It's, it's one of the worst atrocities I've seen in my lifetime. There are lots of others. And again, I have not said anything publicly, because you start talking about nuance with Gaza, and people from every single side of the compass will jump on you. And you end up arguing details. And then the message gets lost in those arguments. So I will now publicly, on the record, with cameras and everything running, say, it needs to stop. We need to have immediate peace. But this is a representative government. It is a representative democracy. And if the board votes to issue the proclamation, even as modified, there will be people who will feel they were not represented by the board. will feel they were not represented by the board. And that may lead to further chaos. And that may dilute the message. There are a lot of other organizations that you have cited that are, have supported such proclamations. So let's look through our community. Let's look through our state and see what else we can do. And you all have done an enormous amount of effort. I saw the sign. I was just in D Squared. The sign's up there about every Friday afternoon. All this is going on. Maybe there are more things to do. I don't know. But let's support the board in their decision, whichever way it goes. And let's continue to find other ways to get this very important message out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kovar. Any other comment? Anybody else on the board? Before we move forward, and Karishma, I'm sorry, I, I forget your name. Sir, you. You said something at the last meeting, and first of all, I was very proud that you got up to speak. And you weren't afraid to speak your mind and tell the board how you felt. And that gave me a great sense of pride. And I, I took home something that you said. And it was something that we, we were talking about precedent. And you talked about what an incredible precedent it would be if the board voted in favor of the proclamation. And, and I knew where you were coming from on that. And that really hit home with me. I'm still struggling with the other part of precedent. And that is, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm here as one of the select board members. I was elected to do a job and we're, we're doing that. Nobody really cares what I think personally, but I'm going to say it. You know, I agree that there needs to be peace. But I have faith, I have faith in our elected leaders in Washington, who may not be moving at the pace we want, but they're moving. And I appreciate the fact that it is thought of that the select board of our town that we're so proud of, and this community that we're so proud of, has the clout to be able to send something to Washington. All that being said, I'm afraid of what would happen in the future if another group of folks came before the board and wanted us to proclaim something that, as individuals, we weren't comfortable with, but more importantly, as a town, we may not be comfortable with. And I really struggle with that. And I bring up the requests that I received and the town manager received when, when Russia initially invaded Ukraine. And folks that got behind Ukraine wanted us to fly the flag at Town Hall. And personally, I backed Ukraine. But I'm chair of the select board, representing the voters, the citizens, the taxpayers. And there may be some who would be offended by that. There may be some who, if we hung it, would come and say, now hang our flag. And I, I just really, really, really struggle with that. So what can you do, the legislative body? I mean, you can come before us and request this. We haven't decided what we're going to do yet. Better, you can, you can ask the entire community in March what they think through a citizens petition. I hope that this is not something that we're still talking about every day in March. I hope that this isn't something that we're seeing on TV every day in March. So I do, I, I personally struggle with, with this. And Mr. Chartren, you've taken the lead on revising this. You've indicated that you would vote. I don't know if you have a motion.
Before you do, I, I thought of something. Do you mind?
Please, of course.
Just one moment.
Yeah.
So I, of course, don't know how this vote's going to go, but please keep in mind that we respect you keep, that you keep coming back. And I apologize that you've had to keep coming back, but you've done it. I'll, I'll add to the personal touch, which I really don't like to do because when I come in this room, I'm not me personally. I am a select board representative. Whether or not this proclamation passes, there are things individually as, that we all can do to help get aid, feed people. So that's something in your advocacy, to maybe get more of that word out to people. I, I do try, I do try sharing on social media. I don't know who pays attention, but I, I just, I just made a huge exception by sharing personal while I'm sitting here. But, you know, very respectful of what you're trying to do. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's important for us to, to move forward in some way, shape, or form, or, or not. This is the third meeting where we've discussed this. I do want to be clear, there's some language right below the date that I did not write. I don't know where that came from. But that is not part of my motion, although those are fine concepts. I thought quite a bit about what I revised. I spent a fair amount of time on it. So I'm going to go just with making a motion based on what the revisions I made. I'd like to move that the select board of Exeter approve the proclamation as I revised it.
Can you read the revisions?
So the proclamation as I revised it, "By the select board of Exeter, New Hampshire, a proclamation calling for peace. Whereas the select board of Exeter recognizes that all human life is precious and all people have a right to live with dignity, feel safe, and be respected regardless of nationality, race, or religion. And whereas international humanitarian law requires all parties to an armed conflict to prevent children and noncombatants in all circumstances and prevent the commission of grave violations against them, including killing and maiming, attacks on schools, medical infrastructures, and hospitals. And whereas hundreds of thousands of lives are at imminent risk of famine and death if a permanent ceasefire is not reached and humanitarian aid is not delivered without delay. And, actually, no and. Now, therefore..."
Excuse me.
Actually, yes, there is an "and" there, sorry. So it's semicolon "and." "Now, therefore, we, the select board of Exeter, urge an immediate de-escalation and a sustained bilateral ceasefire to bring peace and prosperity to Israel and Palestine. The immediate entry of humanitarian aid assistance to Gaza, including medicine, food, and water at the scale required. Moving injured and sick people out of Gaza to receive essential medical treatment at the scale required. The release of all Israeli hostages and all Palestinian people unjustly held in the region, including Israel, Gaza, and the West Bank. The international community, with the international community, to work toward long-term political solutions that could afford safety and dignity to all people in Israel and Palestine." And that says dated this day, whatever day we approve this, "by the select board of Exeter," and it calls for our signatures. That's, that's the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I am not opposed personally, but I have to say no.
And I agree with you. Motion fails. Two to three. Two to three. And I agree with selectwoman Gilman. I don't, I don't oppose, I don't oppose the wording that Mr. Chartren read. I just get back to whether or not it's in our purview. And I just, I struggle with that. And this is one of the hardest votes I've had to make, but, of course.
So we did prepare for if it would pass or if it wouldn't pass, unfortunately. But, so we are saddened that the proclamation did not pass today, but we thank all of you, the members of the select board, for your time and effort in considering our proclamation calling for peace. We had hoped that the town of Exeter would join the New Hampshire towns of Durham, Dover, Hanover, and Lebanon in calling for peace. We had hoped that our town would join the national and international movement calling for a ceasefire in Israel and Palestine. The ongoing genocide in Gaza has been livestreamed for the last eight months. No American can claim ignorance as the horrifying videos of death and destruction are evidence of the daily war crimes being carried out against Palestinian civilians. This is a genocide being perpetrated by the Israeli government in partnership with the US government. This is an Israeli slash US genocide. Today, we want to reiterate that our group of concerned citizens and peacemakers condemns all who terrorize others. Because one of our fellow Exeter residents had made, mentioned that we didn't condemn Hamas, so we want to do that for the record. We condemn Hamas for the terrorism and cruelty they've perpetrated on Palestinians and Israelis since 2007, when they came into power. We also condemn the terrorism committed by Hamas on October 7th of last year. And we applaud the International Criminal Court's application for arrest warrants against the three Hamas leaders, Yahya Sinwar, Mohammed Daif, and Ishmael Haniya. We also condemn the Israeli government for the terrorism and cruelty that they have perpetrated on Palestinians since 1948. We also condemn the terrorism and the genocide committed by the Israeli government over the last eight months, and that continues today. We also applaud the International Criminal Court's application for arrest warrants against two leaders of the Israeli government, Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu and Israeli Defense Minister Yoav Galant. The ICC's actions, International Criminal Court's actions speak loud and clear that no one is above the law. Sadly, that message is lost on many people leading the US government. Therefore, we also condemn the actions of our elected officials who voted to pass a bill last week in the US House of Representatives to sanction the International Criminal Court, including Speaker Mike Johnson and Representative, our very own Representative, Chris Pappas. So thank you again to Chair, Vice Chair, Ms. Gilman, Ms. Bellinger, and Mr. Chartren for all your time and consideration. We really are grateful to all your support. Thank you.
Can I just say, I'd like to say one thing. I would like to thank you, particularly you, but also your group from our initial meeting. You have been incredibly respectful of our process and how our government works. And from the first day, you, you didn't come in here, you know, banging your fists and you wanted to know, how does our government work? How can we try to work together? You've been incredibly respectful of not only us individually, but our process and of the town. And I just, I can't thank you enough because when we have to take a tough vote like tonight, it makes it just a tad easier to know that we're working with such respectful folks. And on a personal level, you know how to get in touch with me. And if there's anything that I can do on a personal level, not representing the town of the select board, I'm happy to continue talking with you. And I hope that we can continue to talk because I've enjoyed our conversations. So my, my door is open and I hope we can continue that communication. And I hope you understand how difficult this was. And we would further encourage you, I pray and hope that this isn't still going on in March, but if it is, you know, please do what you think you need to do to get the town to cast their vote.
Thank you, Chair. So there is a New Hampshire Coalition for Peace in the Middle East, which is bringing together over a dozen organizations, including Jewish Voice for Peace, a New Hampshire Peace Action. And like you said, I have all of your email addresses and you'll start to get my emails.
Thank you, that's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank all of you who have spoke out not only tonight, but during the other two meetings.
Yes, and I'll make sure you have my personal one. Because when you send stuff to our select board, it goes into the packet. So whatever the chair says, but I will send you my personal one. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you, young man, keep up the good work.
Yes. Go ahead. Oh, we could have brought the mic to you.
It's right there.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm back. My name's Ally. I live at 20 Chestnut Street in Exeter. I just wanted to reiterate everything that Karishma shared and thank you all for taking so much time to consider this issue deeply. It's really been helpful to have such a productive conversation with this group. So thank you. I guess I wanted to ask, as someone who's pretty disappointed in this decision, is there anything that we could have done to demonstrate to you better that we do have a really solid representation of people in this town across, by the way, multiple political groups and, you know, different feelings about Israel and Palestine, that they agree with this? Because I think we do. And I don't know if that, you know, came across clearly or if there's anything else that we could have done to really, you know, you know, get you all to see what we're seeing or at least what we think we're seeing. Because it sounds to me like the issue is, you know, maybe we feel like it's not representative and we want to hear that it is in March, when you get the full town to come show vote or whatever proportion of the town actually comes and shows up to vote. And I also understand what Julie had raised about, you know, the considerations around, you know, sharing something at a, a national level in the town. And personally, I feel very strongly that this kind of thing is so different from every other international issue that's going to come up. And I don't know how many people you're going to have knocking at your door about what's going on in DC every day or even what's going on abroad. So, sorry to jump in and share this after everything's ended, but I, I was just curious, you know, what could we do better? I always like quality improvement. And also if there's any shot that there's anything else that we could still do of Karishma, you know, let us know.
We will, we will weigh in those of us that want, but you be careful. Next time, we'll bring the mic to you, Mr. Chartren.
It was clear to me that there was broad support for this, partly from your presentation, but also just from my experience living in the community. So for me, that was a deciding factor. I felt that there was a majority that I could represent, not complete, 100%, obviously. But, so for me, that was the deciding factor. But we all make decisions differently on this board. But it was clear. You made it clear and it was clear to me as a resident and citizen of this town. So.
Anybody else?
I've already said everything, so no.
I'll be brief. For me, it was more of process and setting precedent. I'm very cautious when it comes to that. And, you know, I'm, I'm not going to, I know some requests that have been made in the past. And if we had gone forward with this, it scared me what requests we might get in the future. And I think you did have quite a bit of representation and I know you had a wide variety of, of different cohorts among town. I still believe in our form of government. I'm not going to use the word Mr. Kovar used to begin with us, but it's, it's frustrating sometimes. But it is our form of government and it's worked in this town. And it, and it can be frustrating in terms of the timetable, but I think for something like this, it's the best way to reach out to folks. And, but more so for me, it was just precedent in what could happen in the future. And I'd hate to set a precedent that future board members would have to follow and get requests from something that's not so well-serving as this, if that helps.
I think if I can share some final thoughts. I respect my colleagues on the board and totally understand the reasons. And I also think the other communities in New Hampshire that have voted for this are town councils or city councils. So there's a little bit of a difference there. The thing for me that really motivated this, I, you know, I appreciated the changes that you made. Because it is a little, you know, it's a little bit out of our lane, even if it's the right thing to do, I think. And so it just, it felt, it feels to me that this is something that we can do. I think you all, you know, to echo what Nico has shared, just to, you know, thank you for your thoughtfulness about how you're going about this and, and sort of, I remember sitting down with an expert on the Middle East once. And I asked him a question. He was a very high-serving person in the, in the US government in a former life. And I said, can you explain this? And he said, sure. Well, we're going to start in the Ottoman Empire. And then he said, well, we probably have to go back farther than that. So I really appreciated- And also, this is worded in a way that I think lifts us up by our better angels. And so that's why I felt like I could support it, even though we are a Select Board, and we're not a town council, and all of these different pieces that are, that are really complicated and don't lend itself to this kind of, of work. And so, you know, I, I feel good about where we landed. Thank you, thanks to this board for having a thoughtful, meaningful discussion, and thanks to the members of the community who have, you know, have shown up for this.
So you're walking away disappointed, but here's what you did right. Because that's important, too. We took this matter up in three consecutive board meetings because it was that important to us to hear from you. It was that important for us to try to get to a place where we could take a vote. So you did that right. You kept the momentum going. But more importantly, what you did right is how you conducted yourself in approaching the board, how you conducted yourself throughout this, and that could be a lesson to other groups. Because it is, even when you have to make a tough decision, and even when you walk away disappointed, it's a lot better when it's done with civility and respect. So that's, that's what you got right. So thank you for that. We appreciate it.
And I want to personally thank Dan for the work he did to make appropriation that had much, that was very successful language and important to our cause.
Thank you for that.
Sorry, I didn't muster a majority.
Thank you, folks. If the board will indulge me, we have two more discussion items, but we have a member of town staff who's
Two members.
Been here for a very long time, and he's got one more thing under permits and approvals. If we could pause and skip over that and let Mr. Sharples go home tonight?
Yeah.
Any objection?
None.
No, but Mr. Chair, after that, could we have a short break?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know, I'm no doubt.
Yeah. No, I wasn't insulting. It's good to hear, good to hear what you had to say. Thank you for your work over in New
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. I know, I'm no doubt.
Yeah. No, I wasn't insulting. It's good to hear, good to hear what you had to say. Thank you for your work over in New
Thank you.
That's what it is.
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
Big stay, nice to see you.
Look forward to Thursday.
Okay, next.
Let's get David out of here.
All right, Mr. Sharples, we're gonna get you out of here.
Yeah, thank you. Am I good?
You're good.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. I would, I'm here to request that the Select Board authorize the expenditure of up to $100,000 out of funds for the new police station, fire substation, from the warrant article that was approved in March. Our purchasing policy, which I included for your review, allows department managers and/or the town managers to authorize the expenditure of funds up to $24,999.99. Just under 25. While we intend to follow our purchasing policy, it has been past practice that the Select Board are considered agents to expend for warrant articles just as capital reserves. So it doesn't matter, purchasing policy or not, if there's a dollar, we come and we ask for it. So we will, we will continue, obviously, to come to the board for any expenditures $25,000 or more in accordance with the purchasing policy. We do have several items that needed to be completed for this project, the new PD fire substation, that will likely be less than that amount. For example, we're exploring tree clearing of the site right now. We have, I'm wait, I've got two quotes, waiting on a third. There's some geotechnical work that needs to be done. I've got two quotes waiting on a third right now. I mean, they're all well under the 20, you know, they're, they're, one's like 12,000, the other one's, you know, like 7,500-ish, you know, right around there. Stumping and grubbing will probably come in under 25. Wetlands delineation will come, you know, likely, building commission and other tasks that may not fall under the larger contracts with the design firm and the construction manager. Those are obviously going to come to you because they're going to be way over $25,000. Well, the construction manager would probably be bulk of it, once we get the guaranteed maximum price from them. But we plan, plan on that. But we were looking to, okay, you know, just get, get quotes, follow the purchasing policy. So we were asking, you know, respectfully requesting the Select Board authorize us to utilize up to $100,000 for these necessary tax tasks that otherwise would not require a trip to the Select Board under our purchasing policy, but for the fact that the funds were derived from a warrant article. So I, I, I did provide a suggested motion for your convenience, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have if it's not clear.
And you'd be working with the Finance Director, correct?
Oh, yeah. He's already making me follow, yeah. He's already
And he's not, he's not
Right there behind you.
He's already getting on me for that third quote. I, I got it, but I don't, well, no, I, I asked for it, I met the person, but they haven't given it to me yet, so.
I mean, I'm comfortable with
I am, too. I think the memo really spells everything out very clearly, so.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good. I want to say, at the county level, commissioners have to get approval of the Executive Committee, 20 people, for spending anything over $5,000. So I think we're a little with, more with the inflation index than the counties.
Agreed.
Right, thank you.
So then I would, if there are no other questions or comments, entertain a motion that the Select Board authorize the town manager or their designee to expend up to $100,000 for any work associated with the new police station, fire substation at Six Continental Drive. All purchases made under this authorization shall follow all provisions in the town's purchasing policy.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Sharples. Have a good night.
Thank you for staying so late tonight. Appreciate it.
That was interesting.
Quick break. Yes, the board will take, if there's no objections, a five-minute recess, and we'll convene at 9:37.
I think he's gone.
That's all. Well, that was
Thank you so much. Did he deserve some? Yeah.
Okay, the board is back from a short break, and we thank those at home still watching for indulging us. Our next discussion item is, we are finally ready to appoint the volunteers that we've interviewed for the Pearpoint Park Stakeholders Committee, and hopefully, we can get this committee implemented this evening and, and get a meeting scheduled so we can
I forgot that this was the next item.
You could have just
I could have recused myself and walked out of the room. My apologies.
That's okay.
I am going to recuse myself and walk out of the room.
See you later.
And you, you owe me five minutes of my life back at some point.
My apologies.
That's okay. So we, in our packet, we have the charge that Selectwoman Gilman and I had worked on, what seems like years ago, but it was just about a month or two ago. And it also includes some of the changes that the board made before we made the motion to adopt this. I have a proposal I'd like to run by the board. Before we go ahead and appoint folks, I'd like to ask the board's consideration for making one more revision to the charge and the mission, and that is to add three alternate positions to the nine voting positions. And the reason being is that I believe that while this is going to be a finite period of time, this committee could work up to the next two, two and a half years, as we see this happening in stages. And understanding folks' time, and maybe some might have to step away, or some might not always be available, I, I think maybe we didn't take into consideration that we, we should add three alternates. We have alternates in our other committees. And most importantly, we had, we had a really, really great, diverse, and inclusive group of people who interviewed.
Yeah.
And this will allow us to involve everybody to potentially be a voting member at some point. So, and ask for any, any conversation or comments, or any, if there's anybody that objects to that?
No, I think it's a great idea.
No, I think that we kind of put this together chop, chop, chop. Because we had so much enthusiasm
Of course, yeah.
For it. While we're doing that
Please.
It occurred to me that we might give a little more structure to this committee, and that they should have somebody leading it.
Mm-hmm.
So we never said anything about the, the committee shall vote on the appointment of a chair, vice chair.
Agreed. And, and, and again, we did this chop, chop, as you said. So I would, I would further ask the board to consider tonight to add a chair and a vice chair, and even a clerk for minutes.
Yeah.
To be a big enough committee.
Yep.
That's true.
I agree, yeah. Good, both good, both good. Oh, my gosh, both like, good ideas.
We were talking about who is going to represent the town at various times, Select Board, Town Planner.
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec. Both the Heritage Commission and the Historic District Commission have voiced being included.
Okay. And I think we have one of our, one of our applicants is on one of them, I think. Isn't Bill, is Bill Campbell still?
He's on the Heritage Commission.
Okay. And we can give Historic Commission a place at the table as well?
Yeah. They don't need to be there for every meeting, you know, and this would actually end up going before the Historic District Commission anyway.
Correct.
But
Correct.
Having a little input first wouldn't hurt.
So, so we have before us adding three alternates, adding in that we expect the election of a chair, a vice chair, and a clerk? And that we would have a member of the HTC have a seat at the table when appropriate?
Would we have them as a voting member or a non-voting member? Because all the others are non-
I would make them non-voting, because eventually, it has to go before the HTC for a
Yeah, no, just
And we have, you know, we have 12, you know, with nine voting and three alternates, that's 12. We have 11 people we've interviewed. So Julie, if you want to recruit somebody from the HTC as the 12th?
Oh, well.
Or not?
Yeah, this is a little, maybe from the Heritage Commission, because that's an advisory group.
Yeah, okay, all right. That's fine.
That meeting is tomorrow, so, yeah.
We also talked about Select Board representation, and it's hard for us to consider volunteering when we don't know when they're going to meet. So I'll volunteer to do the first meeting and sort of guide folks through the process along with Mr. Sharples, and, and then we can bring it back to the board and
Sure.
And take volunteers.
Yeah, it's gonna depend on, I actually feel like my reports aren't nearly as long, now that I don't have the Conservation Commission, but two, right? But, yeah.
Yeah, and I think having an alternate Select Board Rep, too, will be proof
Yes.
For this.
Yeah, and it will be televised, so
Yep.
I'll be, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right, so first, I would entertain a motion to revise the mission statement or charge for the Fair, for the Pearpoint Park Stakeholders Committee to include three alternates, along with the nine voting members, to include a charge of electing a chair, a vice chair, and a clerk, and also including a member of the Historic District Commission when appropriate.
So moved.
No, Heritage.
Heritage Commission.
Heritage, Heritage.
Heritage Commission.
Yeah.
So I withdraw my motion and add, I moved that one to add the Heritage.
Joanna, did you get that? So there's a motion, is there a sec?
And then we can, then that other position, this is not part of your motion, sorry. I'll do that after you finish the motion.
You, so that was the, Joanna, do you want to read back the motion?
Yeah. Thanks.
I would move to revise the mission statement or charge for the Pearpoint Park Stakeholders Committee to include three alternates, to include a charge of electing a chair, vice chair, and clerk, and also to include a member of that Heritage Commission.
It's non-voting.
It's not voting.
No, the Heritage, yeah. And we talked about the, what did we say about the HTC?
Let's get a second, and we can discuss it.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, so motion and a second for discussion. I thought Bill was, which one's Bill on?
Well, we talked about having, still having a position left, and we should get somebody from the Heritage Commission. And I didn't, now I'm not sure if you meant officially or as a citizen, you know, regular resident.
You wanted them, right, and you wanted them represented, so it would be
Is Bill still Heritage?
Yeah.
So then we need to
Still get somebody to
From the HTC.
No, 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 I understand what you're saying, but I mean, do you want two people from the Heritage, if Bill's a No.
So where I was
Because we only have five now, so.
Right, so where I was going with that is where Bill presumably will be appointed, whether it be a alternate or a permanent member, then we need somebody from the HTC, is what I was saying.
But Bill would not be a voting member. So just make that clear.
Okay, great.
But we could, so I'm sorry But we could, so I'm sorry, sorry, Joanna. Can we really appoint, so, you said Bill's on Heritage Commission?
Yeah, I'm not appointing him.
Right.
I'm just using him as an example.
Okay, and that's what I wanted clarification on, so.
Yeah.
We're just adding them in and not appointing anyone for either one, so, okay.
The HTC would like to be involved at some point. It doesn't have to be right away, but at some point. And the Heritage Commission is an appropriate body to be represented.
Wouldn't they be involved, I mean, sporadically, really? That's the idea?
Depends on the design. I mean, when the design's ready, then, yeah.
So maybe, maybe we could, maybe we could just consider Bill as a citizen who volunteered and then we can, we can entertain, we can withdraw the motion in a second and we could, we could just add representatives of heritage and HTC is non-voting to sit at the table with staff. Is that, would that work?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to need a withdrawal.
I withdraw my motion.
And Julie?
Oh, you want me to make it?
No, you can draw your second.
Oh, I withdraw my second.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion...
Too many words in my head now.
...to add three alternate members to the Pearpoint Park Stakeholders Committee and to add to the charge that they elect a chair, a vice chair, and a clerk, and to further include as non-voting members, a member of the Heritage Commission and the Historic District Commission as appropriate.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
So now we need to appoint folks as...
Do we have to add the recusal or not?
Oh, and a, well, Mr. Sharples recused.
Yep.
We need to appoint folks to permanent voting positions and then two alternates because we only have 11. I would not recommend terms.
No.
Since we don't know how long this is going to go. I would, my notes reflect that, again, this was a very diverse and inclusive group of folks. There were some who brought, you know, the same talent to the table, so I guess I would just throw it up to the board, similar to how we did the police stakeholders and the arts and culture. If folks want to just start nominating?
I mean, can we nominate them all together since we're not appointing to terms?
Yeah, as a slate?
We need, do we, do we as the, but we as the board have to figure out who the two alternates are? That's, that's consistent with how we, when we've implemented other committees.
So the alternates would be individual, but then we could save the remaining and list the names out as a slate of names or no?
I don't see, I mean, if somebody, so there's two, there's two, no, there's two answers there. The answer is yes, you could as a slate, but then if somebody wanted one in your nine, if you, like, let's, for example, let's say you made a motion to...
Oh, yeah, no, clear, perfectly.
But I like the brevity that that would bring, but I'm not sure it would...
Okay, well, unless anyone has any more, I'm happy to do this. I, I can start. It's up to anyone else.
Yeah, everybody can try better.
Just at the onset, I went down the list and chose my alternates because they were basically kind of the last two, with one exception. I was thinking of Mr. Short because he was part of the original conversation. So I am going to start at the top and nominate Mary Teagle. Did I say her last name correctly?
So it's a motion to nominate and appoint Mary Teagle as a voting member to the Pearpoint Park Advisory Committee.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes four zero.
Do you want me to keep going?
Does anybody else want to jump in?
Julie, anybody? Okay. I'm going to nominate Devon Skerritt.
Make a, why don't you just make the, make a motion?
Oh, Derek Skerritt to be part, a member of the Pearpoint Park Advisory Committee.
As a voting member?
As a voting member.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
I'll try to do this without you having to nudge me on this one. I nominate Stephen Jones to be on the Pearpoint Park Advisory Committee as a voting member.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries?
I nominate Judy Rowan to be on the Pearpoint Park Advisory Committee as a voting member.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries?
Okay, I nominate, I think I've lost one, two, three, four, five, yeah, sorry, six, seven, eight, nine. Okay, sorry, I wanted to make sure I did my math correctly. Can somebody help me with Ann's last name?
Hohenberger?
Thank you. I nominate Ann Hohenberger, sorry, Ann, I'm mispronouncing your name, to be a voting member of the Pearpoint Park Advisory Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries?
I nominate Jennifer Martell to be a voting member of the Pearpoint Park Advisory Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries?
I nominate Amanda Kelly to be a voting member of the Pearpoint Park Advisory Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries? Can I stop you for one second?
Absolutely.
So that's one, two, three, four, five, six. We have two more and four names.
I would...
Could we give consideration since Dave Short was one of the original and somebody who's actually, I think, has worked with Mr. Sharples already? I don't want to make a motion because I don't...
Yeah, no, he's one of mine that I was going to make a motion on.
Great.
Is that okay?
Perfect.
I'll do him next, how's that?
All right.
I nominate David Short to be a voting member of the Pearpoint Park Advisory Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries?
I nominate Keith Whitehouse to be a voting member of the Pearpoint Park Advisory Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries?
I nominate, I believe that's nine, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I nominate William Campbell to be an alternate to the Pearpoint Park Advisory Committee.
I would like to discuss, so I need a second.
I'll second it.
I appreciate Bill's coming forward to volunteer on a second, it might even be a third, but second committee. I think that because he's serving on the Heritage Commission, which would like to participate in the, during the process, that we hold that off till the next, well...
Can't we just change it?
What?
If he decides he wants to do it as a rep from that?
Well, no, because we have more people than we do places, right?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just throwing that out there as an option, is, I thought of that, that's what I was trying to clarify. But I think if we, if we appoint Mr. Campbell as an alternate and he decides he wants to be the Heritage, we can just move that.
Okay.
Okay.
So there's a motion and a second. We've had discussion.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries?
And I vote, I move to nominate Suzanne Stone as an alternate to the Pearpoint Park Advisory Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries? Okay, we have ourselves a committee. Melissa, if Pam could reach out to all these folks and let them know of their appointments?
Absolutely.
And then maybe you and Mr. Sharples and I can get together and throw around some dates?
Sure.
And get that going, yes?
I can get all the rest of the...
She hasn't interviewed yet.
She withdrew.
Oh, she withdrew, I beg your pardon. Okay.
Yes.
So we do have one opening for an...
That's what I was just going to, no, that's, just to remind everyone, we still have one opening, possibly two.
Come on back, we're done. Okay, Melissa, we can touch base on that. And then the last agenda item, for discussion items, anyway, Assistant Roy is going to lead this introduction.
Thank you, Chair. Every year, the town has to put together a property tax deed list and the board has to support sometime, for this year, before June 18th, whether or not they would like to move forward with deed waivers or actually start the process of deeding various properties. In the past, we have not moved forward, we have waived mobile home outstanding balances due to the fact that if we were to take them, then we would owe lot rent and various other issues. On the list this year, there are four non-mobile home properties, and so we just need the board to decide if you would like us to start the deed process. We've sent letters, this would continue to be contacting them and sending them letters, which is a pretty typical thing we do. So there would be four properties we would move forward with deeding and the rest would be waived, and that happens in the fall, I believe it's September, but this is the deadline. I'll talk louder, I just lost my mic.
No, it's okay.
Are there any questions or comments? I think in the past, we've moved forward with deeding in that regard and not, and then we can take that up at another time, correct?
Yeah.
Do you need a motion? Do you need direction?
I don't need a motion. Last year, there was no motion, just a support of the board to move forward in that direction.
Any objections from the board or are we in support?
In support.
Support?
Mm-hmm, support.
Support. You have the support.
Thank you so much.
Okay. We don't have any tax abatements, we've done our permits and approvals, Melissa, so I'm going to let you continue with the Town Manager's Report.
Had a busy last two weeks. We had a fantastic meeting with the departments that we expect to submit CIP for this year. It was something a little different than we normally do. We had all of the departments listen to each other's proposals this year so that we can work as a group to prioritize. So it was a, it was a really long, I think it was about four hours, but it was, it was really great. It was great to hear everybody talking and asking questions of each other, so we started that. We had a very, Parks and Rec had a very successful senior barbecue on May 31st. It was a lot of fun and very well-attended. Yeah, Russ, myself, and you, and the Chair joined the Brentwood Town Administrator and the Brentwood Chair of their Select Board to have a discussion regarding Pick Park. Oh, my Lord, it's tired. Thank you, sorry. We issued the RFP for Design Services for the Police Station and Fire Substation, so that process is moving forward. We expect those back June 21st. And Russ, Corey, and myself continue to work on an implementation plan for the Keegan Report, which we hope to bring to you folks on the 24th.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Any questions, Ms. Roy? Okay, moving forward, Selectwoman Belanger?
So I'm going to, I need to forego for just tonight, the Recreation Advisory Board. They met on May 29th, but I didn't get them added to my notes and I'm just too tired to try to read my chicken scratch.
Okay.
I will say that on Friday, I took the day off and volunteered for the barbecue. It was wonderful, as always. Thank you, Parks and Rec and the sponsor, but we had a lot of firefighters and town personnel, including Melissa standing there helping serve, and Russ was serving at one point and then out-talking to our seniors. And I just want to thank Parks and Rec for continuing to make us an inclusive community and including our seniors. They really enjoy it, you can just see it on their faces. Planning Board, we had a Planning Board Conservation Commission joint site walk on June 6th on the corner of 131 Portsmouth Ave and the GTE Road for a Fox Motor Project. On June 13th, we had a June 13th meeting coming up, that, there's only going to be four of us showing up at the Planning Board meeting because they've asked to continue, I think they need to get some more information to us, so that's it for me for tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Selectwoman Gilman, please.
Yes, I've had no meetings since we last met. The Energy Committee is meeting Wednesday at 3:30 and has quite a long list of things to discuss. Hopefully, they like to keep it to an hour, so we'll see if we can do that. Upcoming Electric Vehicle Day in September, Unitil just had one Saturday, which we had a table at. And also, the Heritage Commission is meeting Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. Be the first time I can attend since they changed the time. And there's a lot of discussion points about what we're going to, what we've accomplished in the master plan, what our next 10-year plan is going to be, what grants do we want, the status of the Pine Street Survey Grant, et cetera. And the only other thing I want to do is nudge you about the...
Oh, boy.
National Bicentennial, 250th, Joanna, you can tell me the word.
Semi...
Sess...
Semi-sesquicentennial?
Semi-sesquicentennial, it's, it's means, I don't know, means half of 100 years, anyway. We talked about putting a committee together and we really have to do it, so, because it'll take time to put money in the 2025 budget to be able to do the 2026.
Let's get working on it this summer.
The 2025 budget's coming up.
I know that.
Okay.
Start working on it. You nudged me?
I will make a...
The nudge is duly noted.
Okay, I will start a thing.
Good.
Okay.
That's it. Okay. Selectwoman Cowan?
I don't have any committee reports to share, but I do have a voting rights request. There is legislation pending before the legislature, before Julie and colleagues on Thursday that would fundamentally shift how we run elections here in New Hampshire. There's a bill that passed both the House and the Senate, it's on its way to the governor's desk, and would put a really tremendous burden on people registering to vote. It would require proof of citizenship, which means you would, if you're new and you're registering to vote for the first time, you'd need to bring your passport, your birth certificate, or your naturalization papers. And there would be no affidavit to sign that would let you vote if you don't have those things. These disproportionately target people who are, who are older, who have maybe not traveled outside of the country. Only 40% roughly of New Hampshire residents have their passport. This would target women who get married and change their name, or then get divorced and change their name back. And it would require our election officials to deny people the right to vote who are legally able to vote. There is no other state in the country that requires this, and it would, as local election officials, we are charged with protecting the right to vote. We have been proactive as a community by passing funding to buy new ballot counting devices, which we are not approved to buy, and I would ask that the town government and us and our, and we support our town clerk, who is really nervous and scared about these election changes.
Supervisors.
And the supervisors of the checklist, and our volunteers who come in to work the polls every day. I wish Akil was here because this is, this would be a devastating attack on, and voter suppression, and I'm really worried about the consequences of our very sweet and lovely town clerk and volunteers who come in and make our, make sure our elections work.
Forgive me for not remembering, but do you remember the number of the bill?
It's 1370 that's on the floor.
Thank you.
1569, I already went to the governor.
Sorry, 1370?
Yeah, I have the emails. So...
Excuse me, what was the other number?
1370.
Yeah.
And 1569.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Got it. Thank you.
And the other thing, this would, this was tried in Kansas a couple of years ago and resulted in millions and millions and millions of dollars in litigation costs for the state of Kansas. So that's what we're signing up for, if this... the state of New, of Kansas, so that's what we're signing up for if this, if this stuff passes.
Great, thank you, Selectwoman Chartran.
No report from me tonight.
No report, okay.
I wouldn't recommend calling the Governor's Office, send him something and call him.
That's a great suggestion, Julie.
Yeah, flood the phone.
I did not have any formal committee reports, however, I spent a lot of time last week with the Assistant Town Manager and Town Planner, Sharples preparing for this evening's property update, and also had the opportunity with, along with Ms. Roy, to meet with the Town Administrator and the Chair of the Select Board in Brentwood to give them an update on Pickpocket Dam. We told them about the final feasibility study being presented on May 28th to the Board, told them that the Board would be taking this back up on June 24th, we wanted to give them three weeks' notice to possibly go back to their Board, and I, I did ask the question whether or not Brentwood had a preferred alternative, and if so, whether they would be willing to collaborate financially, and I didn't get an answer, so that was my activity, among other things.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment?
Yep.
We thanked a lot of people, a lot of people were thanked during the rug property conversation, and I, I def, I, I could not say enough about our Town Planner, I also want to thank you. I understand that people don't understand how the process works, and that's why we're sitting here, to make sure we follow the process, and that when we're in a negotiation, we can't help that somebody else might push information out there, we can't counter it, so your leadership has been exemplary through all of this, and I just wanted on the record how much I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And, and you have constantly been trying to move this along in a positive way, so I want to thank you for that.
I appreciate that. All right, moving to correspondence, we had a note from Mr. Kovar, who was here with us earlier about electronic speed sign, and I'm actually going to be meeting with him later this week, we communicated via email yesterday. We have correspondence between a citizen near the West Side Drive project, and I know Mr. Cronin has been responding to him, and they're working together, so that's just emails, I think, in here because I'm copied, we had some other emails that were sent to the Board about the rug property, those were responded to by me, and what else do we have? And just our NHMA Legislative Bulletin.
This public, this trust public land that I found out about on social media, of all places, that letter dated the 31st of May, did we actually as a Board or a Town get this letter?
No.
Okay, so that's.
Well, we didn't get it on the 31st of May, we got it.
When did we get it?
We got it sometime last week.
Okay, so it was mailed to us instead of maybe faxed or provided email attachment?
It was emailed to us.
Okay, so, thank you for clarifying that, because that was something I, I didn't get into, learning about that on social media was a little shocking, so, thank you.
So, right, we did get it, but we got it after we'd already received it as a snapshot from somebody that went on social media, so.
Yeah, great communication skills.
Our Board calendar, we have our all-Board meeting scheduled for June 25th at 6:30 at the Library, our Board meetings, I'll go through it again, we should all have them on our calendar through September, we have June 24th, July 8th, July 22nd, August 5th, August 19th, September 3rd, which is a Tuesday, day after Labor Day, September 16th and September And if there's no other business, I would entertain a motion to enter into non-public under RSA 91A, 32A and C.
So moved, second.
The motion is the second, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Chartran?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair?
Aye, motion passes five zero, Board will be moving into non-public, thank you everyone.
Thanks for sticking around.
Well, I'd like to say thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.